Well, Madam Mayor, I think we're ready.
Thank you. I'd like to welcome everyone to the City of Brisbane Joint City Council and Housing Authority Meeting of Thursday, November 19th, 2020. And with the city clerk, read the preamble, please.
This meeting is compliant with the Governor's Executive Order N-29-20 issued on March 17th, 2020, allowing for deviation of teleconference rules required by the Brown Act. The purpose of this is to provide the safest environment for staff, council members, and the public while allowing for public participation. The public may address the council using exclusively remote public comment options. The council may take action in any item listed in the agenda. Members of the public may view the City Council meeting by logging into the Zoom meeting listed below. And the City Council meetings can also be viewed live and/or on demand via the city's YouTube channel, www.youtube.com/brisbaneca or on Comcast Channel 27. Archive videos can be replayed on the city's website, http forward slash forward slash brisbaneca.org forward slash meetings. The City Council meeting will be an exclusively virtual meeting, and the City Council Agenda Materials may be viewed online at www.brisbaneca.org, at least 24 hours prior to a special meeting, and at least 72 hours prior to a regular meeting. Meeting participants are encouraged to submit public comments and writing in advance of the meeting. Aside from commenting while in the Zoom meeting, the following email and text line will also be monitored during the meeting, and public comments received will be read into the record during Oral Communications 1 and 2 or during an item. Email ipedia@brisbaneca.org, text 6282192922, join the Zoom meeting with the meeting ID 98908606940 and the passcode 123456. The call-in number is 16699009128. If you need special assistance to participate in this meeting, please contact the city clerk at 415-508-2113. Notification in advance of the meeting will enable the city to make reasonable arrangements to ensure accessibility to this meeting. Thank you. Madam Mayor, you're muted.
You're muted, Terry.
Okay, well, we'll start that over again. So with that, I'd like to call the meeting to order, and would you join me in the pledge of allegiance? So I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And with that, may we have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Conway.
Here.
Councilmember Cunningham.
President.
Councilmember Davis.
Here.
Councilmember Lentz.
Here.
And Mayor O'Connell.
Here. Thank you. And with that, may I have an adoption, a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Thank you. Motion by Clark Conway and seconded by Madison Davis. Roll call vote, please. Oh, I'm sorry, Karen Cunningham. I heard the voice wrong. With that, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Conway.
Hi.
Councilmember Cunningham. Councilmember Davis.
Hi.
Councilmember Lentz.
Hi.
And Mayor O'Connell.
Aye, thank you. That moves us into Presentations and Awards, and it is with great pleasure that we have the proclamation in honor of Senator Jerry Hill and Senator Hill here with us tonight. So with that, I'd like to read the proclamation, and it is, "The City of Brisbane in recognition of Senator Jerry Hill. Whereas the tenure of the Honorable Jerry Hill with the California State Senate is drawing to a close following 12 years of dedicated service in the California State Legislature and nearly 30 years in public service. And whereas Senator Hill was first elected to the State Senate in 2012 as the representative of the 13th Senatorial District, after having served as representative of the 19th Assembly from 2008 to 2012, as well as serving as a member of the San Mateo County Board of Supervisors from 1998 to 2008, and of the San Mateo County City Council from 1991 to 1998. And whereas, over his 12 years of service in the California State Legislature and on numerous committees and commissions, Senator Hill's legislative accomplishments include more than 150 signed bills and resolutions that address a vast array of issues important to governmental agencies, businesses, and residents in the district. And whereas the legislation championed, authored, and organized by Senator Hill, which focused on consumer safety and protection, education, coastal access, government accountability, public utilities, transparency, and law enforcement, among many other issues, reflects his dedication to improving the communities he served. And whereas, through his tireless commitment to public service, Senator Hill leaves an enduring legacy on the City of Brisbane, the County of San Mateo, and the state of California. Now therefore I, Terry O'Connell, on behalf of the City Council of the City of Brisbane and all its citizens, do hereby honor and pay tribute to State Senator Jerry Hill, and thank him for his many years of public service, and warmly wish him continued success in his future endeavors. And with that, it's my great pleasure to welcome and to honor Senator Hill. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you. I'm really honored and so appreciative of this recognition because Brisbane is a very special, I don't have to tell you what a special place it is, but it is very special. It's very unique. I mean, it's, when I was a child, going down through the Old Bay Shore, going down to friends that we had in the peninsula, this was in the 19, I hate to say, 50s, 60s, in the 50s, you know, especially in the holidays, the stars were shining bright in Brisbane, and just everything about the city. And when I walked the San Bruno Mountain and San Bruno Mountain Watch gave me quite an orientation as to the beauty and the uniqueness of it, always stuck in my mind as something we had to preserve and protect, and hopefully that will continue in the future. But it is a very special place, and I'm honored by the recognition and certainly honored to see so many friendly faces that I've known for many years. And Clay and I, interestingly, he's probably the longest-serving city manager in the county at this point, but he has always been, in my view, the most outstanding and the most learned in terms of the issues, the practicality of how you operate and run a city. So Clay, it's great to see you tonight and in those many years with that. And the council that you have is, what I see and what I listen to and as I watch the work that you do in protecting the residents and protecting the community makes it such a very special place. So thank you very much for that recognition and the honor tonight, and I'm looking forward to, as we said before with Clark, to not having anything to do for a while.
Well, we will be sending your proclamation to your staff and to your office. And are there any comments from our council to Jerry this time? Go ahead.
Yeah, if I could, yeah, Jerry, kind of, you know, we're talking right before the meeting that, you know, it's almost 27 years for lack, you know, known each other for 27 years. I was originally on the council in 93, and you were on the City of San Mateo's City Council, and then you went on to become County Supervisor. And then from there, you went to the State Assembly, and I remember coming up to your swearing-in, first time you guys swore in. I drove up to Sacramento with my wife and stepdaughter, you know, and, you know, you just really kind of are that local guy who really kind of just kept going, you know, and I've always appreciated you. There's times where we clashed, you know, and we always, we always, yeah, we always had a very honest and open relationship, and I always appreciated that about you. So, you know, enjoy your retirement. I'm retiring also, and I'm going to enjoy mine. And like you, it's like, I don't want nothing to do with this stuff for a while, you know, it's like, I was just telling my colleagues earlier that, don't count on me watching these meetings because, you know, I de-subscribed from Comcast, you know, so I can't even get it, and I don't even want to use YouTube for it. So that's it, you know, and, you know, you got to decompress from it, you know, after a while, you know, you kind of go and go and go. And, you know, your career, you've kind of really gone through all the gamuts, except for Lieutenant Governor and Governor, and then on to the national levels, you know, certainly use somebody rational there, that's for sure.
Don't count them out, Clark.
Yeah. Well, I don't know. I mean, you know, I mean, there comes a point, you know, in everybody's life where you just say, you know, I've done it, and, you know, I don't have much more to give, you know, from a perspective as an elected official. Certainly with all that knowledge and stuff that you gain through the years, I know how you are, you would certainly share that upon anybody asking you, you know, your advice and stuff. So, you know, that, you know, telling my colleagues, I'm always open to that, too, you know, a phone call, you know, and everything like that. And so I really appreciated you through the years, Jerry, through your honesty and stuff. And so, you know, I can't say that I'm going to miss this, you know, but some people, but I still have your phone number. So you and I can get together, you know, and maybe have a virtual cup of tea or something, you know, until all this stuff gets over. So good luck in your retirement, sir.
Thank you, Clark. Thank you very much.
Yeah, if I'm, maybe not, unless someone else got their hand out. Okay, so, hey, Jerry, thank you. Great seeing you. And, you know, it's amazing, you know, I see you in this little, this little window here, and you look exactly the same as you did when I was elected 11 years ago on the council. And, you know, I still remember, you know, that time that you invited me to breakfast in San Mateo after I was elected to the council. And, you know, like Clark had said, you know, you've always been like so accessible and willing to share and provide your knowledge of how public service operates. And, yeah, I really appreciated that engagement that we had, and it grew. And you were always a mentor for me and all of my public service endeavors. You always provided really sound advice, and, you know, I really took it to heart. And, you know, I just really valued that. And, you know, the way that you operated, whether it was with other peers or with the public, it was something that, you know, I wanted to replicate in the way that I conduct myself. So thank you for being a great role model. And, you know, in that other thing, you know, that Clark mentioned in regards to accessibility, I remember being at a, I think it was a Affordable Housing Meeting, it was something like that. It was down south, and you were the host of it, and you just really engaged the community, and you gave out your cellphone number. And I had to pull out my own phone and say, wait a minute, is that really Jerry's cellphone? And it was. And, right, and you just gave that to every, I mean, there must have been a couple hundred people in the room. And you just, you know, that's how you were, and that's how you operated. And I think so many people, you know, respected that. And, yeah, you were, you were a great gift to our county and every single city within the county. So I wish you all the best in your next life. Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you very much, Cliff. I'm honored. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other? Go ahead, Karen.
Hi, Jerry.
Karen.
Most of our relationship has been supporting another person in our community, Congresswoman Jackie Spear. The only time you and I have actually spoken was regarding Measure JJ, and you and I were kind of like this, but we got through it, and obviously, we got through it. So thanks for your help on that, and wishing you the very best for the future.
Thank you, Karen. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Yes, I'll go next, if that's okay.
Go ahead, Madison.
Hey, Jerry. Thank you so much for everything that you've done for the City of Brisbane. And, you know, I'm really aware of all the travels with Jerry that we've had in the City of Brisbane. Been so impressed with the way that you've carried yourself. And there was one particular instance where there was so many people in the parking lot at Madhouse, and they were really riled up about AB5. And just the way that you handled that, and you handled questions, and there was, you know, another horde there that were, wanted to discuss a bill regarding the Catholic Church and priests, and there was a whole horde of people there. And then there was a bunch of other people wanting to talk about the Baylands. And so just, it was really a joy to see you balance all those different forces, and you just stayed so calm. And I think it would be really easy under that much pressure from so many different places to, you know, to break that and to get maybe a little bit riled up. And so it was really such a cool experience for me to watch you in that circumstance, because, you know, as somebody who's new in this journey of being an elected official, to see somebody so seasoned and just tackle that like a pro really was such a role model for me. So I, you know, I've appreciated everything that you've done for the county, for our city. And, you know, it was a pleasure that time that we got to get to know each other a little bit better, when Clark and I had those meetings with you a few years ago, and just, you know, really understanding your perspective about the Baylands. And I always felt that during those meetings, while we may have not always shared the same perspective, you certainly, I felt, gave me consideration. And I felt that what I was expressing to you is not falling on deaf ears. You're really taking the time to understand our position and try to find some sort of balance that we could come to and some sort of agreement that would work for everybody. So I just thank you so much. And, you know, I hope that you enjoy this next journey in your life, whatever that may be. So, thank you.
Thank you, Madison. That's very kind of you for those comments. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else? So, thank you, Jerry. You were one of the first people besides David Canepa, when I got elected, to give me their cellphone number, offer their support, and I truly appreciate that. I know we have had our differences at times and different perspectives, but I always felt that you were working for the county as a whole and Brisbane as a smaller part for us, and I appreciate that. And so stay safe and have a great next career.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, very, very much, and thank you to all of you. Again, I'm just truly honored by it. And Madison, thank you for bringing up memories that I had forgotten about that job with Jerry. That was, that was an interesting morning that we had there and some of the issues. But I truly appreciate all the great things. And, Madam Mayor, I did want to have the opportunity to say some things about Clark. May I do that now, or is there another spot on the agenda?
I think this would be a great time to go ahead and do that.
I appreciate that because I know that Clark is leaving, as we spoke before, and I just have to really say that, you know, they talk about some leaders that, you know, it's in their DNA. Well, as we know, with his family background, it is in his DNA, the great leadership and the strength of Brisbane. And I know no one, in fact, when we met after I was elected and he was elected, and we talked, we had a lot of common interests and a lot of similarities in our life, both personally and professionally. And what I found and have watched Clark over the years is his broad knowledge base of Brisbane and the perspective that he puts together because of that frame of reference he has, has made him an extraordinary leader for a community, because there's nothing that happens in that city that he doesn't know, the story, the history, the foundations behind it, and what are the pitfalls and some of the challenges that are there. I've watched that from afar a little bit, but I get involved in the cities, but I've seen it in every conversation that we've had. And his heart of gold, which is something that is special to not just being as an elected person in a city, because as we've all seen, and frankly, we've all met a lot of elected people and know a lot of them, there are some that have a heart of gold and have a commitment for their community and are in it for the right reason, which is service. And Clark Conway is that person. He epitomizes that. And I've seen it when he was on the council the first time and on the second time. It only grew stronger after that. And every issue that he has been pushing and advocating for comes from the heart and comes from the best interest of the city. Clark, you are probably, and that's why I was so honored when you came to Sacramento when I was elected, you're a good friend, and I appreciate that, and not just to me, but to everyone in Brisbane. And you've given, over your life, that most extraordinary commodity, and that's time to your community. And so thank you for that, Clark. And we will be in touch, and we will be sharing notes, and we will be spending time together. And I, like you, probably won't be watching what's going on in the legislature in the future. But thank you for everything. Thanks for being a good friend. I appreciate it, Clark. Thank you, Madam Mayor, for indulging me.
Thank you. And that is something that we're going to have more of at our next City Council meeting.
And I would be there with you, but my last day is a week from Tuesday, so I won't be able to do it as a senator. So thank you again, and appreciate the honor tonight, Madam Mayor.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you, Clark. Bye-bye.
So, after that, we have another proclamation, actually, two proclamations coming forward, and we are going to do a video first, I'm assuming. Thank you.
That's correct. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the council. We have the privilege this evening of honoring a couple of our Brisbane residents who have been remarkable over this past year and who have provided continued service and volunteerism to the community over many, many years. We have two co-volunteers of the year this year to recognize this evening. They are Joe Sully and Vicky Smith, who are both present this evening as well. So we're going to share a brief video before we get to the formal proclamations, and I will share my screen here. Hopefully, everybody can see that. And here we go. She has publicly dedicated herself to give for free a mask to every person in Brisbane. At this point, she has sold over 2,600 masks. She has used her own tech to not only make them, but to sit at the farmer's market to make sure that they were accessible to our community. And when she received donations, she used a donated fund to buy gift cards for local businesses to use as voucher prices for whoever donated.
I would like to express my gratitude to you, Lion Joe, for all the years that you've served our community as a lion, but most especially in this year, for your tireless, unending efforts to make sure that 75 of our seniors get a freshly cooked delicious meal every Monday.
I want to salute Vicky and tell her she's a terrific person, a wonderful community member. We're very proud of her. Welcome to the club, Vicky. She also, by the way, made me my own mask for my son from his favorite blanket. I would very help with that. Thank you.
And Joe, we're so thrilled. And I want to point out, one of the wonderful things that you said, you and Jerry were the first couple to be volunteers in the year in Brisbane. So kudos to both of you. Congratulations.
Congrats. Thank you.
Thank you so much for all that you do for our community. Your efforts have not been done very well.
Thank you so much. I really, I really enjoy.
We appreciate you so much. And with that, I will turn it over to Mayor O'Connell for the reading of the formal proclamations.
Thank you, Noreen. We are going to start with a proclamation for recognizing Joe Sully. It's a proclamation of the City Council of the City of Brisbane, recognizing Joe Sully for his volunteer service to the City of Brisbane. Whereas Joe Sully has proven himself to be an essential responder during this pivotal year, and whereas Joe has spent countless hours since early in the pandemic, shopping, preparing, and cooking to provide meals to some of Brisbane's most vulnerable residents. And whereas Joe has been integral in the battle against food insecurity for Brisbane residents by preparing weekly meals for seniors during the pandemic alone, Joe has provided over 1,700 meals to seniors. And whereas his volunteerism in our community dates back many decades, as a member of the Lions Club, Joe acts as the primary chef, serving up delicious meals at citywide events, including the annual Day in the Park and Citywide Yard Sale. He also volunteers at the annual Lagoon Cleanup Event, preparing meals to sustain the volunteers conducting habitat restoration. Whereas Joe is known for always giving more than he takes, he cooks and provides meals to his tenants, neighbors, laborers, garbage men, and anyone in need of a meal. And whereas he is tireless in his efforts to help others, Joe's giving of his time, energy, and talents, and his selflessness represents the true spirit of this award. And now therefore be it resolved that after decades of dedicated volunteerism in our community, we take this opportunity to express our gratitude to Joe Sully for his selflessness and dedication to serving others. Many congratulations to Joe Sully on being named the 2020 Volunteer of the Year. Thank you so much. And is Joe with us tonight? Would Joe like to accept his award?
Yes, I believe I'm here. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Much. I just want to express my gratitude to the city for bestowing this award on me and to the Brisbane Lions Club for allowing me the opportunity to cook for the community, which obviously I've done for a long time and hope to continue to do for a long time. Appreciate all you people and all the work that you've done for the community I was raised and born in, and I've lived here for almost 72 years. And I truly enjoy what I do, and will continue to do that for City of city of Brisbane and residents and other people in need. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Joe. You have all of our thanks and, and accolades for doing what you do. Would any members of our council like to say a few words?
I'd like to just say, thanks, Joe. Keep up the good work and keep those good meals coming, brother.
Yeah, I just want to thank you all for everything you do. One of the first people I met when I moved to Brisbane and you've been generous from day one. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you, Joe. I mean, you, you're the epitome of, of, you know, what the true spirit of volunteerism is and um, yeah, a lot of people are grateful for the work that you've bestowed upon us. So keep it up, buddy.
Thank you very much. Look forward to continuing my services in the future for all the upcoming events that we're eventually gonna have.
Thanks, Joe, for everything. Um, you are such a gem to have as a citizen in Brisbane and such an asset to the Lions Club. And I think, you know, not only are you so giving of your time and your talents, but I think when I see you at work, I can always get a sense that you're having a good time. And I think that that's, it's not just what you do, but it's how you do it. It's a spirit that you have when you're giving to others. And I think that that's something that's just so infectious. You know, when I, when I see you at work, I'm like, it inspires me. So thank you so much for, for everything that you um, have done for the city of Brisbane, for the Lions Club. And we hope that you'll, you'll continue to do it.
And thank you also as another person who grew up here and for appreciating our special place and being a part of it. And I'm very proud to be a part of it also.
Thank you.
But Mayor, I also have some public comment.
Okay.
Hi, Joe Sully. You deserve the best and to be voted twenty-twenty Volunteer of the Year because of all your cheerful deeds you do for our city and for the Lions Club. We are talking years and years and years of grilling, cooking, and Christmas cheer. Thank you, Joe, so much for years of dedication. Fay and Dale Conway.
Thank you so much, neighbors, and uh, grew up together here for decades. You know, know the family, family knows me, and we all love and know Brisbane. Thank you so much to the Conways.
Any other comments? No.
No other comments.
Thank you very much, Joe.
We, we have to thank Joe and we also have to thank Jerry, because I know she's right along there with him on a lot of those things. So thanks for both of you. So, and Joe, this award is
Well, because of her support, I've able to uh, continue to do this and uh, we have kind of a one-person kitchen, but there's a lot of trips up and down and uh, shopping to do and list to make and things not to forget. So uh, my partner in service has been instrumental in my success.
Absolutely.
Well, thank you so much, Joe. We really appreciate you.
And we appreciate all the effort all you people do to help our city. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And with that, we will move on to the next Volunteer of the Year, which is a proclamation from the city council of the city of Brisbane, recognizing Vicky Smith for her volunteer service to the city of Brisbane. And whereas she has assisted the Brisbane Elementary School PTO with their finances, led a Girl Scout troop, and has supported the Mothers of Brisbane. And whereas Vicky Smith has proven herself to be an essential responder during this unprecedented year. And whereas she began sewing masks early into the pandemic for local school districts, including Brisbane, Bayshore, and Jefferson. She spent countless hours making and shipping masks to the Navajo Nation and distributing free masks to all seniors and essential workers. As part of her public pledge to provide a free mask to every Brisbane resident, Vicky stationed herself at the weekly farmer's market and ensured that anyone who needed a mask had one. She also has sewn masks for local nonprofits and businesses in need. And whereas Vicky has sewn and distributed over four thousand masks to date. And whereas she expanded her positive impact when donations were received by purchasing gift cards from local restaurants, which were then raffled off. Her approach has helped to support local businesses during this trying time and with proceeds also benefiting BEST, PTO, and Black Lives Matter and LGBTQ plus charities. And whereas Vicky is a selfless neighbor embodying the spirit of this award, she acts with the purpose of community in mind and strives to improve the quality of life for Brisbane residents. And now therefore be it resolved that after many years of dedicated volunteering, we take this opportunity to express our gratitude to Vicky Smith for her selflessness and dedication to serving others. Many congratulations to Vicky Smith on being named the two thousand twenty Volunteer of the Year. And with that, I thank you so much. Is Vicky with us today? Yes, she is.
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, thank you so much. It's been so great to be able to provide these masks. It's given me something to do with my time. I'm a substitute teacher. So obviously my job pretty much ended in March, so um, given me something to do. And I really appreciate everyone who's donated fabric. I've had people just drop stuff out at my house. Jody Lynn, I don't think I've ever met her, dropped me off ribbon and nose pieces that I've never even thought, the things that go around coffee beans. Like, and these are amazing. Like, I never would have thought of these things, but they just get dropped at my house. Sheets, I really appreciate it because that's really helpful. Because I need is so many sheets and fabric that has just been dropped by so many people. And Steve from Farmer's Market, who runs it, just lets, even with Girl Scout cookies, I've never had to pay a fee. I'm able to just come set up. Super helpful and has really provided a way to do this. And in a way that I can provide low-cost masks and to raise money for restaurants in town. And I've donated, I only keep track of what leaves my house, but I've donated about twenty-two hundred masks that I've left my house and I've made another about two thousand masks that I've sold to help pay for the fabrics and the other things that need, in need. I still probably have like two, three hundred masks laying around my house that still needs to go out and get sent out. So I really appreciate the whole town because this has been really a community effort for me to provide these masks. And I really do appreciate everything that has, everyone that has contributed. Karen Cunningham has like taken masks and dropped off to seniors. Um, has dropped off, has collected things for me early on for me to make fabric, to make masks and fabric and all kinds of things. So in ribbon and everything. So it's been great and it's been my sanity, quite honestly, to do this because otherwise I think I might have gone crazy. So this has been a real treat and I just think everyone in this town, I couldn't have done it without this town. Because it's just the community and being people, I've met so many people at the farmer's market that I may not know their face. I probably wouldn't recognize them without a mask. But I have met so many people and it's been amazing. And just to have that four hours every Thursday to hang out at the farmer's market and sell masks and talk to people. It's been quite the journey. In the first three weeks when they're like, it was like crazy masks flowing off my table, money being thrown at me, masks being gone in fifty minutes the first day. It was insane. But it was fun and I really enjoy it. Now it's, it is my joy. So thank you.
Well, thank you so much. We really do appreciate everything you've done for the community and for the school districts and for the countless others that this has touched. Any comments from our council? Go ahead, Karen.
Hey, Vicky, you know, um, I, I met Vicky many, many years ago and from the, the first day I ever met her, I'm like, who is this woman? Who is this woman who has this giving spirit from her heart without any expectations back from anybody? Never looking for the accolades, never looking to be out there in front of, of everybody and receiving praise for all the stuff that she has done for many, many years. We're just talking about the masks this year. We're just like out of this world. This lady jumped right in and right on it with, with no qualms. All of her time devoted to our community was amazing. But prior to that, she's been really into our community and a volunteer for many, many years. So super proud of you, Vicky, and, and thank you so much for everything that you've done.
Thank you, Karen.
An amazing, amazing person.
Thank you, Karen.
You're welcome.
Yeah, Madam Mayor. Yeah, thank you, Vicky, very much. You know, I, I first met you down at BES and uh, you know, your, your kids and my grandkids going to school together. And I saw how your volunteerism was when you got involved with the school and, and uh, uh, doing a lot of things, you know, and, and you epitomize that volunteerism in Brisbane. And keep up that good work because it just reminds me of how Brisbane grew. Is, it really was always through volunteerism. Way before the city of Brisbane was a, an official city. And that, that's kind of the roots of Brisbane. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'll go next. Hey, Vicky, uh, well, I might have Clark beat because we go back to Silver Spot days. Oh. And, and getting to work with you at Silver Spot, it was always like, you know, there were the parents that hardly volunteered to do anything. And then there were the parents that picked up the slack and you were definitely like one of the people that could always be counted on. If something needed to be done, you just did it. Like you just threw your name in and you're one of those people that's just so reliable and um, you know, one of the things that wasn't mentioned, and there was a lot mentioned about, you know, all the masks that are going to Brisbane. But I think one of the things that touched me so much was learning about all the masks that you've sent out of Brisbane. And um, you know, sending masks to the Navajo Nation who was just completely impacted by COVID and they have no supplies and they're completely underserviced uh, population. And so to know that, you know, you're putting your efforts behind getting masks, not just to our community, but really getting masks to the most needy people, no matter where they are. And um, just to see how quickly you jumped into that, you were the first person I knew that was making masks. And I think you, it was not just the amount of masks that you made, but like I know that you inspired so many other people to start making masks too. And they were seeing all the masks that you were pumping out and how you were just giving them away and, and people, people wanted to, wanted to do that also. And so I think that you're responsible, you know, for a few thousand masks yourself, but I think in reality, you really inspired way more than just that that has gone back to our community and well beyond. So thank you so much for everything you're doing. Um, and it's really been a pleasure to watch. Thank you.
Thank you, Madison. I have to say that Linda Seekins um, in town, who is also making masks, were the ones that was I would give her the mask and she would send them out to the Navajo, Navajo Nation. So it was both of us as a group effort. And she's the one that like said, hey, I'm doing this. And I was like, yes, sign me up. And so I would drop them off in her mailbox and she would ship them out.
And see, that's exactly what I'm talking about. It's like, I think that you have been able to collaborate or inspire. And, you know, you've put your efforts into getting these masks into the hands of people that need it. And so thank you so much for that clarification and um, I love to see that, all the good work that you're doing.
Thank you, Madison.
Yeah, you know, uh, hi, Vicky.
Hi, Clark.
Clark.
All right, Clark. I don't have pictures of him and I saw Clark's name over here and the video is not working for me.
No, no, it's all good. You know, um, I was just so impressed with this, how you, you responded to this, to this pandemic. You know, so many people, you know, were just caught off guard and, and not knowing what to do. And, and but because you have such a giving heart, you automatically knew what to do and you got to work right away. And um, you know, I remember, you know, being on these, these county conference calls and and they were talking about, oh, you know, you shouldn't wear a mask. I mean, it was just, it's so weird, right?
Right.
Yeah, it's such a trip. Like, yeah, right? And so, uh, you know, and then there was, you know, like, oh, yeah, masks aren't good. And, and then you definitely shouldn't be wearing a mask, you know, made by, you know, someone in your town or whatever. And, you know, it's like, there were no masks. And you know, because of folks like you, you probably saved just, you know, countless lives, you know, in those early days. And um, but you, you know, the way that you just like take on this stuff, I mean, you, you could just tell you absolutely love it. And it's so addictive. You motivate, I mean, I, I like to volunteer and, and, you know, but I know I don't even come close to someone like you. But I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna work hard, you know, to try and do more just because of, of, of how you operate. So thank you so much, Vicky.
It's exciting what you want to volunteer, what you want to do. I love to sew. And this was like, oh my God, I kind of gave that up when I started substituting and now I'm like, okay, I'm not doing that anymore. Like, this is what I can do. And it was really stressful the first couple, I would have started sooner, but there was all that miscommunication. Our, you know, from the CDC, it was so hard. And so I was like, well, I'm doing it, I guess. So here I am. Thank God, because
Thank you for being an outlaw.
And it saved my sanity. Like, please come talk to me at the farmer's market, please.
Well, it's so nice when you can put your passion to helping others and, and uh, bring joy to, to something you love doing. And we really all appreciate that. Thank you so much. Karen wants to follow up with another comment.
Sorry, Terry.
It's okay.
You know what? Um, I, I just need to share a couple of little anecdotes here. So driving down Sierra Point Road, quite often, there would be this, this group of Vicky and, and friends who were sitting socially distanced. So, so, so she was the leader, but there was this other group of, 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 of ladies who were friends and this was how they were, you know, dealing with the stress of, of the moment. And everybody was making masks. And, and another shout out to Victoria Vargas and Michelle Salmon, who were also making masks as well and whoever else was out there by your inspiration, just by the way. Just like, there you go. That's it. I'm, I'm glad.
With many Friday mornings making masks in front of Karen's house.
Yep. Sierra Point and Placer Way. I saw you out there.
That was us.
It was the powwow, yeah.
I gotta keep my hands busy.
Some joy.
Thank you so much, Vicky, and the city of Brisbane truly does appreciate all you've done. And congratulations. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, one more public comment, please?
Sure.
Hi, Vicky Smith. I love my festive masks and dressy black masks too. The Conway family are wearing nothing but your masks. I love all the effort, time, and love you put into each one. Thank you for all the selfless hours you volunteered and thousands donated to schools and organizations. Stylish masks also contributes to slowing the spread of COVID. Your volunteer of twenty-twenty year award is well deserved. Favor Kel and Dale and also Andre.
Thank you, Conway. I love them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so that moves us along to an update from Item C, which is an update from San Mateo, San Mateo County Vector Mosquito and Vector Control District.
Ms. Parker, you can go ahead and unmute.
Hi. Um, so I just wanted to do an update since I haven't really done one in a very long time. Uh, there's been some significant change Uh, there's been some significant changes recently and one. Is that our district manager, Shindy P V retired October thirty first. Uh, she began working at the mosquito abatement district in nineteen ninety nine. She moved to Alameda and came back in twenty fifteen as our district manager. Uh, she was organizing and put in top notch people during her five years as director. She led the district in a positive. Constructive and financially responsible manner and the district was awarded two awards during this time. The Transparency Certificate of Excellence and Accreditation as a District of Distinction by the California Special District Leadership. Foundation and our. And then we were also given an award uh from the California State. To receive a certificate of achievement of excellence and financial reporting from the Government Financial Officers Association. And the reason this was such a big deal to the San Mateo County Mosquito District is that seven years previously, two members in the financial department. Were charged with embezzling four hundred and fifty million dollars over, I think it was a three year period. Um, she, we're, we were very fortunate to have her. She was extremely organized, very positive, a very good scientist. And she, I I learned an awful lot from her. I can't believe how much I learned. Uh, she has been replaced by Brian Weber. Um, he has just started this month. Uh, he has been working at the mosquito district since two thousand and five. He's a longtime resident of the city of San Mateo. He was born there. Uh, we're really excited to have him as our new manager. Um, he. I guess really wanted to stay in San Mateo County Mosquito District. Uh, but when we interviewed, it was obvious he was our choice. He's just a very good, good person and we're really excited about. To have him. One of the things that Shindy did was that she had the Board of Trustees hire Richard Arrow as the Finance Director. Uh, he was retired, but he would do some jobs here and there. He served thirty seven years in various counties ranging. From a county auditor controller for Marin County for a few decades. And in other counties as financial director and chief financial officers for the other counties. Um, and he's worked at Mads since twenty seventeen. When I went on the um financial committee, he and Shindy pulled me in and started teaching me accounting. That's how dedicated they were. Uh, and then, of course, of course, COVID came in and that was the end of that, but um. He's been really good. Um, Mad uses Map Vision. Uh, which is a web based data management system. Uh, which crosses enterprises, data sharing with other districts and can help target treatment applications, field tech active. Activities, lab processes, maintenance vehicle equipment. Uh, so two years ago, the lab department said that when they had an opening that they would like. Instead to replace one of their staff with a tech expert. This year, David Kwan was hired as the information technology analyst and this made the whole operation of the district much more manageable. Because for one thing, the office and field techs were not, were able to work on their own activities rather than trying to continually try to manage. Map vision. Um, this year, the district and the trustees decided to sell their Redwood City location. And consolidate all their vehicles and offices to Burlingame. Um, because there was a huge increase in traffic. It was taking the drivers up to. An average of fifty to fifty five minutes each way to go to Redwood City and to pick up the vehicles. And drive them back to Burlingame. Uh, so the district actually had an offer immediately and were able to sell the property and. Uh, it has leased a property, uh, two doors down. To the main office where they are storing their vehicles and they also have created more office space. Uh, and presently, they are looking at purchasing some local property. Um, during this time, I've been on uh the four years at the. Um, mosquito abatement district, we finished our programmatic environmental impact report. Uh. When I came on, Shindy had worked with the trustees to hire a public. Relations person, Megan Selby, to do outreach and public information. Uh, she she just resigned. Uh, but she has been quite active in encouraging people uh from all over San Mateo County to contact the district through the web. Site, she's used media, Nextdoor, newspapers and other media. Um. So presently, the districts in the United States are learning how to use drone surveillance. Uh, so we're part of that and we're beginning to. Look at how to train people in using drones. We haven't done anything about it yet. Um, and that's because the Aetis Egypti mosquito is making its way up through California. Uh, this mosquito is different from our own local mosquitoes. Our own local mosquitoes. Uh, can fly seventeen miles and they're controlled by using vegetable oils in the areas where they breed. Uh, the Aetis Egypti mosquitoes live in tiny bits of water, like a Dixie cup. And unfortunately, this mosquito is a major carrier of diseases such as dengue fever. Chickagunya, Zika fever, yellow fever, viruses and other diseases. So. With the use of drones will probably be really important in being able to control and find find these mosquitoes. Hopefully, they won't be here for quite a while, but we're we're anticipating they will be here eventually. They were here a couple of years ago. Three or four years ago in one little area, but they haven't been in San Mateo County since then. Um. So I wanted to talk about Brisbane. So far, uh, the mosquito abatement district. Uh, has treated three thousand two hundred and sixteen bases, catch basins. Uh, there's been total property visits in twenty twenty of five hundred and forty one. Uh, the mosquito site treatments are a hundred and twenty four. Uh, there's been two large applications. Of over one acre. These are the Bay Shore Roundhouse, the Candle Refinery Property and the Brisbane Lagoon. Uh, the twenty twenty service requests per capita is twenty two requests, but per capita. Compared to other cities such as San Mateo, it's the same as population. We all have a population of four thousand five hundred. Um, so far, there were eight service calls for rodents. Five service calls for yellow jackets, three for wasps, two for raccoons, one for bees. And one pickup for dead birds. So I, we do like people to call in any dead birds they have because we can test. To see if they have any diseases that we need to um test. This year in in October in San Francisco, South San Francisco. There was one crow that was infected with West Nile disease. Um, so far this year, there's been a hundred and seventy two dead birds collected, of which five birds were tested. Uh, no mosquito samples have been confirmed positive for this year in San Mateo County, so we think that this crow flew in from somewhere else. Um, and the tick season this year is uh, it's just ramping up. We have the Western Black. Legged ticks occurring in winter and early spring. This tick is the main vector for Lyme disease in California. We do not have these type of. Ticks in Brisbane and on San Bruno Mountain. Uh, San, San Bruno Mountain District conducted two wild rodent disease surveys on San Bruno Mountain. Uh, consisting of a hundred Sherman traps placed along trails and targeting wild mice. The wild mice were tested for hantavirus, which and plague and two tick-borne bacterias. No mice tested positive for plague or tick-borne bacteria. Three mice, however, tested for the hantavirus. Uh, the hantavirus is um. Native area is San Bruno Mountain. Uh, people should avoid and take care when entering older buildings that have not been used in a long time. Uh, and and not to stir up any dust. Uh, and to kind of let the area um have some open air so that the. Um, it can just get, the hantavirus can just leave. The problem with the hantavirus is that um it's passed through rodent urine and saliva. So it's important not to raise the dust, such as sweeping or vacuuming and airing it out. Huntavirus is native to San Bruno. Mountain and it is similar to COVID, only it's more lethal. So. Uh, presently, there is someone on the staff who has um. Her specialty and uh research has been in hantavirus. So they're keeping an eye on San Bruno Mountain, but there's no. Real problem here at this point. So that's my report and thank you very much.
Thank you, Carolyn. We really appreciate all the hard work you've done over the last four years, um, being on the. San Mateo County Vector and Mosquito Control District and hopefully, when we get through our consent calendar. We will have reappointed you. So we really do appreciate your hard work and thank you for that report. It was very well done. And is there any comments from council at this time?
Thank you for your service, Carolyn.
Well, I've certainly enjoyed it.
Yeah, Carolyn, thank you very much. I mean, it does require some dedication, you know, to do that. I know. Bob did it before you and uh he was, he was like you, he's dedicated and uh, you know, you're special people.
If he ever left, that I wanted to uh go on the mosquito abatement district. So I've really been thrilled I was able to do it. It's. Very interesting district.
Well, thank you. We really all do appreciate that. Any other comments?
Thank you, Caroline. I I hope we have this as a written report because obviously we can't just absorb what you just said. Thanks.
I'll have to type it up. It's been a long hand.
Thanks, Carolyn. We're lucky to have you.
Yes, thank you. Okay, with that, we will move on to oral communications number one. Are there any members of the public who are in the meeting who would like to speak?
Madam Mayor, I haven't, um, I have not received any written correspondence or text messages. Indicating that members of the public wish to speak.
Okay, well, then we will move on to the consent calendar. Do I have a motion to approve items D, E, F, G, H and I?
I'll move.
Okay, move, moved by Councilmember Lentz and seconded by Councilmember Conway and a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Con- uh Conway?
Aye.
Councilmember Cunningham?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lentz?
Aye.
And Mayor O'Connell?
Aye, thank you so much. That brings us to item seven, new business. And the first item is item J, Baylands remediation update and city comments on draft feasibility studies. Remedial action plans for operable operable unit, San Mateo and operable unit two. Staff report, please.
Oh, yes, thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. I don't think I need to make the council aware of the city's long held commitment that. Any future development of the Baylands be predicated that the site be made safe for future visitors, employees and residents. Uh, that a commitment was reaffirmed and strengthened through the passage of measure JJ. Which added additional provisions and standards for future remediation of the site. Well, city has this commitment to ensuring the site is developed safely. It's important to recognize that the city does not. Hold the regulatory authority to approve remediation of the site. Um, site remediation is really under the authority of several different state agencies. And so while the city has input and participation in in formation of of review of the remediation. We don't have final regulatory approval. Um, but you know, it is important that the city does have a seat at the table and that it, you know, staff and. Proactively advocate for the city's and communities' expectations and needs for their site development and in remediation. So um, when the developers started working on the remediation planning earlier this year, late last year. City put together a consultant team to make sure they were actively engaged in the preliminary work of these. Um, you know, the planning, the remediation planning and developing of remediation plans. To make sure we had, again, a proactive point of view, make sure that the city's concerns were made uh known sooner than later. And make sure that the city's needs and objectives were addressed. Um, you're aware that both the draft, the remediation plans for both O U's uh have been released. By the regulatory agencies. So given where we are in the process, I thought it would be appropriate for the city, um, our consultant team to come in tonight. Give a presentation to the council about some of the work um that was done, some of the issues that they've identified to date. And also to make some recommendations, since we are in a formal review process or the actual wraps with the state agencies. It'd be appropriate for the city to make formal comments at this point if we so choose. So with that, I'm going to turn the presentation over to uh Michelle King of E K I, who's one of our lead consultants on this. Turn it over to you, Michelle.
Great, thank you, John, and thank you, Mayor O'Connell and council members for letting me provide an overview.
You're having a lot of static on your audio.
Oh. Wi-Fi is okay.
It could be your background.
I will turn off my background and you'll see my lovely artwork behind me. Or how about if I go with no video?
Hey, Michelle. Oh, hey, Michelle, um, if I may just jump in real quick, I had a big problem today. And the Logitech cameras upgrade seemed to override. The computer audio. Maybe if we can't resolve this, if you could. Call in on the phone number and use your audio from your phone and disable the audio on your presentation so we can see the presentation. Just bringing that up because it happened a couple of times.
Yeah, you know what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna first go out of the meeting and then I'll try to come back in and see if that helps, okay? Um, we'll try that first.
First, perhaps this would be a good time for us to take a five minute break and um. We can make sure we get taking the audio issues taken care of. So if if I, I'll just get a verbal, that's okay. That we'll take a five minute break and come back in when we've got that audio settled. Okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, if someone can tell me if Angel.
Yeah, much better, Michelle.
Great, thank you.
So we're just taking a five minute break, so just.
Yeah, I heard that, yeah.
Okay, great.
I will um get the presentation pulled up in the meantime.
All right, let me.
Looks like the screen share, yeah, I have to.
Hold on one second.
No problem.
Do it manually here.
I'm glad you didn't take a break.
That's why there's two of us. Okay, give that a shot, Michelle.
There you go. Okay.
Beautiful. It's coming up.
And hopefully, audio is okay.
That sounds nice and clear. Not sure what it was. It looked good.
Excellent. Yeah, it's funny because I don't have a headset that connects in with my laptop, actually, so I'm a little at a loss.
Interesting. This happens sometimes.
Sounds crystal clear.
Gremlins, that's what it is. Gremlins.
Yeah, exactly. I'm gonna go take my quick break. Ingrid is back.
Did she fix it, Ingrid?
We're good.
Oh, awesome. Had the same problem today.
Yeah, that's so funny because I, yeah, obviously I've been using it all day, so.
We're going to go ahead and mute everybody right now. It's still being livestreamed.
Yeah.
To the city clerk, have we gotten our audio issues corrected?
We're getting them.
We'll do another test just to make sure.
Okay, I hear very well. It sounds much, much better.
Magic of the restart button.
Yeah, let me know when they're ready to go back into live mode.
We're already live streaming as we speak.
Okay, great. Well, welcome back, everyone to the city council meeting and the presentation on the Baylands Remediation Update and the city comments on the draft feasibility studies. And welcome to our consultant EKI and Michelle King. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor O'Connell and council members for giving me the opportunity to speak and provide this update and summary of the draft feasibility study and remedial action plans for both OU two and OU SM at the Baylands. I'm going to give an overview of really how the cleanup process works, where these FS wraps that are out for public comment fit into the overall picture. I'll talk briefly about the chemicals of concern, the objective of the remedial actions, and then how they really came up with their preferred alternative. And then next steps, which is really the recommendation of of city staff to city council in terms of where we should go from here. So the cleanup process, this is an overview of the four steps. And I'm not going to go into the details of it, but the first step is really where one evaluates the issues at the site. You go back and look at the site use history, you collect the environmental data, and you evaluate human health risks and any environmental risks. And the idea is to have enough data that you could then select a remedy that makes sense to remediate the site, which then leads you into step two, which is where we are now. And a key part of the remedy selection is evaluating the feasibility of different options to clean up the site and then selecting a preferred alternative in the remedial action plan. And this is the step that really has a required public comment period and is typical that goes out for public comment. The thing to keep in mind is that the remedy is described in in a remedial action plan is is tends to be more general. And when you get over to step three, the implementation is where the design is developed. And this is where the the true details of the remedy get fleshed out. It's a critical step because this is really the the step to ensure that the remedy that's put in place truly is protective of human health and the environment when that remedy is designed and then implemented. And then the final part of the process on the right is the certification and storage ship. And this is where you have approval of the active part of the remediation. There may be ongoing land use restrictions, operations and maintenance and periodic reviews. And this ensures the long term protectiveness of a remedy because most remedies are not fully complete when, let's say, they dig up the dirt or put a cap in place or whatever they choose to do for a remedy. There's usually some ongoing obligations. So that's the overall process. And so just I think everyone is aware of enough of the Baylands. It's right there in your front yards or backyards, whichever way you want to describe it. But the cleanup of the San Mateo Operable Unit, which is the northern operable unit shown here on the left side, is being performed under an order with the DTSC. So that's one environmental regulatory agency. And then OU two, the southern part of the Baylands, is being remediated under an order with the Water Board. And then the landfill is being remediated under the oversight of the Water Board, but that's not part of the active or the the documents are out for public comment. So we're really focused on OU SM and OU two. So what are the chemicals of concern? Both of these properties share largely a common history of, you know, the rail yard history. And as a result, the chemicals of concern are pretty similar as you look at the two properties, OU SM and OU two. And I'm going to spend a few minutes just describing some of the the chemicals of concern because the properties and the way the chemicals behave in the environment do have an impact in how one thinks of remediating them. So the main chemicals of concern are actually primarily present in soil and they're metals, mostly arsenic and lead with a few other metals, but those are the primary metals that are the risk drivers. Petroleum hydrocarbons. And at rail yards, petroleum hydrocarbons are mostly tend to be heavier petroleum hydrocarbons. And so they're not very mobile in the environment. So both the metals of the petroleum hydrocarbons tend to stick more to the soil. You might have groundwater impacts, but they tend to be more localized if you have groundwater impacts. And then we move on to the chlorinated VOCs or volatile organic compounds. And the name volatile means that they they, while they can stick to the soil, they also partition into the gas phase. And these are the ones that can become vapors that can migrate up into indoor air into homes and businesses and occupied space that may be sitting on top of the VOCs. So a remedy for VOCs looks different than a remedy for metals and soil. And so for the VOCs in the northern part of OU SM, there's a chlorinated VOC plume coming onto the site from the Schlage Lock remediation site. And so a lot of the actions that are going to be implemented in OU SM for the VOCs are going to be really performed under the Schlage Lock FS wrap. On the southern part of the site at OU two, there is a VOC hotspot there that has impacted both soil and groundwater and soil vapor. The other compounds, the PCBs, PAHs, pesticides and penicillin, there are more minor actors out there. And generally, the remedies that would be put in place to address metals, petroleum hydrocarbons and VOCs would address these other compounds as well. So the objective of the investigation was to make sure there was adequate data to be able to select remedial alternatives. The objective is not to investigate every molecule of soil at the site. So these two feasibility study remedial action plans are out on the street for public comment. The OU two FS wrap was released on October 28th. And there was a public meeting last night. I don't know if anyone watched it last night, but the Water Board held a public meeting. And they've extended their public comment period to January 31st. The OU SM FS wrap just went out for public comment earlier this week. And that public comment period is for roughly two months and ends February 15th. So there is some time to pull together the comments. There's not urgency given the deadlines that are here. So what are FS wraps and what do they include? They typically summarize available data, summarize the health risks. And a key element is to identify the remedial active objections. And this is really how clean is clean? What are you establishing for the cleanup? And once you establish those objectives, then you look at what technologies can be used to remediate the site. And and those technologies, as I'll describe, are combined into remedial alternatives. And the end game of the FS wrap is to select a preferred alternative and then describe the key elements of the alternative. So that first thing that I said is what are the remedial action objectives? How clean is clean? And here, the idea is to make sure that the sites are cleaned up to prevent exposure to soil. It's really to chemicals in soil, groundwater and soil vapor at levels of concern for onsite and offsite residents and workers. So what that means in plain English is to make sure that whatever remedy is put into place will be safe for onsite and offsite populations, whether it's a residential population, a worker population, or a visitor population. So with that objective in mind, the the UPC team identified 17 different remedial technologies that could be potentially put into place. And they evaluate the technologies based on three criteria, effectiveness, implementability, and cost. And then they take those technologies and they assemble them into alternatives. So the slide shows the different the different technologies that could be applied that were basically brought into the next step to develop alternatives. So you can see there's things like land use controls and engineering controls, which I'll describe a little further. A bunch of different active remedies, which include excavation, capping, treatment and disposal for groundwater treatment and monitoring, and then for vapor, putting in vapor mitigation systems. So these different technologies were then assembled to create alternatives a set for the OU SM and a set for OU two. And the thing that I want to point out is that the remedies for the two OU's are very similar, again, because the chemicals of concern are very similar. So there's really not a lot of reason to have one of these FS wraps to be particularly different. I will point out a few exceptions. So the first alternative is a no action alternative. And this is required basically in the regulations that you always have to evaluate the alternatives against effectively a baseline of doing nothing. And we do know that doing nothing, if there's development on the site, is not going to be protective of human health and the environment. Alternative two is one where they're proposing to put in land use controls and engineering controls and continue to monitor groundwater. And land use controls can be restricting certain uses. Engineering controls can be things like putting in fences and signs and things like that. Alternative three is the idea of some of these land use controls and groundwater monitoring, but combined with capping as being the primary means for dealing with soil with some excavation and offsite disposal. And for OU two, the water board area, as I mentioned, there is a VOC source area there. And so alternative three includes for OU two excavation of that impacted VOC impacted soil as well as in situ groundwater treatment or that VOC area. Then when you move to alternative four for OU SM, they've added a little bit of additional offsite disposal. It's virtually the same as alternative three. And then the last alternatives for both OU's is the full excavation and offsite disposal scenario. So that's basically removing all of the contamination. So those are the elements of the remedial alternatives. And then what they do, or what one does in an FS wrap, is you evaluate these alternatives against nine criteria. Truly, the evaluation is against seven criteria, the threshold criteria and the balancing criteria. And I'll describe what these criteria are. But the the threshold criteria are the, let's call them the do not get past go criteria, that if you have to be protective of human health and the environment and you have to be compliant with laws and regulations. And if the alternative isn't compliant with those two elements, those threshold criteria, then you cannot select it as a preferred alternative. The balancing criteria listed below that, those five criteria, are the elements that really distinguish the sometimes more subtle differences, sometimes more extreme differences between the alternatives in terms of assessing which alternative is truly the preferred alternative. So the first one, reduction of toxicity, mobility or volume through treatment, is some type of active remedy to reduce the amount of impact. So like treating the VOCs in groundwater. Short term effectiveness is looking at the impacts during construction typically. So in other words, you know, is there going to be a lot of particulate emissions? Or is the construction period a long period or a short period? Long term effectiveness really looks at, is it going to be durable and last over the long term? You know, and are there means to make sure it maintains that protectiveness over the long term? Implementability is how sort of constructible it is. Does it use typical construction equipment? Or is it something that's novel and maybe not as tried and true? And then cost, I think, is self explanatory. So then there are the last two criteria, which are called modifying criteria. And this really comes into play after the public comment period where the agencies, you know, look at the community, the comments received from the community, they evaluate the alternatives themselves and decide, yes, we're in agreement with the assessment. And very rarely, honestly, do they disagree with the assessment. So then, looking at these alternatives that were laid out, so alternatives one and two do not meet the threshold criteria. They do not. They are not protective of human health and the environment, and they're not compliant with laws. They also are not compliant. They also are not compliant with measure JJ. So those effectively get eliminated out of the starting blocks. And then you move into the alternatives, basically the capping alternative versus the full excavation alternative, which do meet the threshold criteria and they are compliant with measure JJ. So when they did this comparative analysis, I'm not going to spend a lot of time on the detail, but each of the FS wraps, if you do go and actually want to look at the FS wraps, they have these tables, these matrices that you can see with the green and red and yellow. And that's where they're doing this analysis and evaluation of alternatives, where red is the worst ranked and the brighter green is the highest ranked and yellow and light green are somewhere in the middle. And they use this as a way to do a more objective evaluation of the alternatives and what ultimately becomes the preferred alternative. And so you can see in the table below, we have for OUSM and OU2, the cost, because obviously cost is one of the big distinguishing factors in these alternatives. So you can see that the cost for capping is, you know, roughly $9 million in OUSM and $33 million for OU2, whereas the excavation and disposal alternatives are, you know, roughly $58 million and nearly $200 million for OU2. So the costs were a big differentiator. But a lot of what goes into, you know, the cost is, if one thinks about it, is the extensive amount of off-haul for the excavation alternatives. And you can see, you know, on the bottom of the chart that's here are the, you know, 25,000 and so nearly 100,000 truckloads of soil going off-site. And so it's not just the impact on greenhouse gases. It's the potential chance of spills. It's the duration and impact on potentially on the surrounding community from all of that excavation activity that ultimately ends up in resulting in alternative three, the capping alternatives as being the preferred alternatives. So in looking at the alternatives, as I started out saying-
Michelle, I'm sorry. Can you go back to the other slide? I just want to get some clarification.
Sure.
You know, so on the OU2 side, to alternative three and alternative four, so you have 1,000 truckloads, that's $33 million. And you have 70,000 truckloads, that's $195 million. But yet, you know, I mean, significantly more truckloads in alternative four, but not that much of a difference in the cost. So I'm just kind of curious why that is.
You mean the cost of going from 33 to 195 million?
Yes.
Yeah. Oh, so you don't think that's that much of a difference in cost? Okay.
Well, compared to 1,000 to 70,000.
Well, that's, oh, the number of truckloads, yeah.
Yeah, and the number of days. You're talking about 48 days and then the other one's 10 years. And yet, those are, you know, huge differences. And not to say 33 to 195 isn't big, but it's not in the same capacity as these other two data points that you're showing here.
Yeah, so there's differences in, so this is in some ways, the number of truckloads is the sheer volume of soil. So the shallower soil, if one were to, and some of this is a difference of the types of contaminants. So the shallower soil that would be excavated here under alternative four, really for both cases, under the excavation alternative, some of that soil will likely test to be a hazardous waste. So if you excavate and dispose of it, it would have to go to what we call like a class one landfill. But a lot of the soil is impacted, but not so impacted that it has to go off as a hazardous waste. And so there may be a very large volume of soil going off-site under alternatives four and five. But some of it is, it's like, it's above, let's say, a residential screening level, but it's, it can be disposed of at like a class two landfill, potentially even a class three landfill. Where, and then under alternative three, where it's the bulk of the excavation would be the VOC hotspot area, that might have to be handled a little bit differently. And honestly, my colleague, John Montgomery Brown's on the phone. And I don't know if he knows the specifics. And if you, if you're interested in understanding sort of the difference in disposal options. But I think that would be a lot of the driver of why perhaps, you know, the 33 million and 195 million don't seem that different. But a lot of the cost here is tied to bringing in some import fill to create the cap that's needed. I mean, then they need to build up the site anyway. And yeah, I guess that would be probably the driver. And then there's that in-situ groundwater remediation as well that's going to happen here. So that's why, you know, it's a factor I didn't actually look at this to see, so.
So Michelle, if I can chime in for a moment?
Absolutely.
I'm concerned about, you know, soils that would need to go to a class one landfill being left here where they're just going to leave the poisons here and we will be that class one landfill in theory. And that certainly worries me. And when you originally talked about this, you said that the the plans were developed by UPC. And so obviously, they are the ones concerned about the cost of developing this property. And so why would the state approve something just to give a financial break to a developer and leave those poisons on site?
So the way, you know, the state will look at this is, you know, I mean, it is UPC's, you know, document for sure, right? And so, yes, they do have perhaps a bias when it comes to costs, but the state will look at it as, is the remedy protective of human health and the environment? And can you implement the remedy? And does it have the long-term effectiveness? As I talked about the balancing criteria. And so the state's job is not to necessarily make a polluter, a developer, necessarily pay the highest cost to give the most, let's just say, the most stringent cleanup. The state's job is to say, is it compliant with law? Is it protective of human health and the environment? And does it make sense? So a capping alternative is a common alternative that's used, especially on sites that are of this scale. I think of this site where, let's say, just the chlorinated VOC hotspot, where they are going to dig it out, that would be, you know, a preferred remedy is to remediate hotspots. But when one has a widespread type of contamination like this across the surface, it is quite common to cap it. An analogous site, and you probably have heard of the Zeneca site in Richmond, in many ways is an analogous site where the approved remedy for that site is some hotspot cleanup, but also a capping alternative.
And these capping alternatives are full residential cleanup?
I don't know. Full residential cleanup, but yeah, it meets a residential standard. So the idea with a cap is that you're trying to block-
For ground-based residential?
Yes. Yes, because the idea is that you're blocking that exposure pathway by putting the cap in place.
Okay, thank you.
Does it, does it, if I may, Madam Mayor? This is Clark.
Of course, go ahead.
Yeah. Does it meet what's in measure JJ?
Yes, that was in that earlier slide, yes. So there's the element of the capping that blocks the exposure pathway that would allow residents to, you know, residential units at grade to be present. And then there's the other part of it that is the volatile organic compounds I was going to get to on this slide. So for both of the OUs, once they import the fill, they will let things equilibrate and then they're going to do an assessment to determine if vapors need to be mitigated. And then that vapor mitigation would be incorporated into the designs for the buildings for the occupied space that's sitting on top of the cap to assess whether BI mitigation, vapor intrusion mitigation is actually needed. So that assessment will come in the future. So those are the ways to think about how the pathways are being cut off, the pathways of exposure. And that was why I spent a little bit of time explaining how metals and petroleum and those compounds, pesticides, PCBs are not volatile, but they tend to stick to the soil. So if you cut off that contact pathway, then you do not have an exposure. So a key element of these alternatives is, once the remedy is put in place, is to make sure there are appropriate restrictions and measures so that when, let's say, someone has to go in and repair a utility line, that the utility lines are put into clean soil corridors and there's a soil management plan in place, that there's operation and maintenance plans to make sure there are cap inspections and that the vapor intrusion system is monitored. And typically, there's financial assurance mechanisms put in place with the remedies and with the agencies so that there's a means to make sure over the longer term that there's money available to perform the ongoing operations and maintenance.
Okay, Michelle, if I, if I can, so I just want to confirm that all of the volatile contaminants will be excavated? The others are not? Can you just kind of give some greater clarity on that?
Yeah, yeah, sure. No, it's a, it's a good question. So at OUSM, you have coming from north to south, from Schlage Lock, there's a VOC plume that is migrating onto OUSM in groundwater. And so that area, you know, is, is basically you're at low concentrations of the plume that could be volatilizing up into occupied space up above. And so there, they're not going to remediate the VOCs that are on OUSM. If there's going to be a potential vapor intrusion risk, then they will mitigate the buildings that are sitting on top of it. They'll put in what's called a sub slab depressurization system.
Can they also inject those, you know, that contaminated water with certain type of organisms or other means to break down those volatile contaminants?
That's what they're proposing to do in the hotspot area on OU2. On OUSM, the concentrations really aren't that high. So yes, one hypothetically could do that type of remediation, but the levels and whatever remediation is going to be done will be driven by the Schlage FS wrap. And I don't think that calls for any type of off-site treatment there's up there.
But doesn't, doesn't that, doesn't that flow go into Brisbane though, from San Francisco?
Yeah, it flows into the OUSM, yes.
Yes.
Yeah, so it's, it's, yeah, so it flows into, from Schlage into OUSM. And that's where, and those concentrations are really not really all that high and it's in the very northern part of the site. So the plan is to, once, and so here, let's just look at this example. So the plan is they'll ultimately, for the development, import fill and they're going to probably want to do surcharging and let soil compact and such. So there'll be a period where the VOC concentrations that are down here in groundwater, if you can see my cursor, they'll be volatilizing up into the soil. And then at some point in time, there will be an evaluation of the VOC concentrations in soil gas. And one of the things the city has said to the UPC consultants is, I don't know where my cursor went there, that we want to make sure that we're assessing the VOC concentrations here as well as in the new fill because there's still that ongoing potential source over time. So we really want to make sure that over time, that the remedy, whatever they select, if they, you know, that if they, we would push for vapor intrusion mitigation systems if we see that there's a long-term potential for vapors to enter into the buildings, even if it hasn't necessarily pulled right into the fill. Those details haven't been worked out yet. And that's something that, in terms of, you know, basic recommendation is that the city wants to stay involved in evaluating what's being done to make sure that, you know, they are protective when they are thinking about, let's say, designing a new building and that they are actively considering, you know, does vapor intrusion mitigation need to be put into the buildings?
All right, you know, and I do have some, some questions, you know, later on. But since we're on this right here, so, you know, in regards to monitoring, is it going to be something that's done every five years? Is it every, like, is it an annual thing? Or is it just like when some, you know, some kind of monitoring device, you know, gets activated?
So there's no monitoring plan that's been put on the table yet. Now, they've made assumptions in the cost estimates for the monitoring. But so what is typical is that there will be five-year reviews. So every five years, no matter what, there will be reviews of, is the remedy still protective? And that's sort of the, I'll call it the backstop at some point. For the vapor mitigation systems, where you're, basically you're sucking a vacuum from under the building slab, those will be monitored. They, I don't know exactly how they're going to design them, but often they're tied in if they have an active fan, that if the fan shuts down, that there's almost like an auto dialer that will call someone, say, hey, the fan shut down, you need to start it up. So I wouldn't call that continuous monitoring, but typically there is something that is a notification if the fan blower shuts down. And typically, there's not really a short-term risk if it does shut down for a short period of time. Then there'll be monitoring of the cap. That probably would happen on an annual basis is what is typical. There will be requirements, like I said, if someone has to go in and disturb the cap. So let's say someone has to go and repair a utility. And so that stuff typically gets documented in the cap monitoring reports. The details of these plans, you know, have not been developed yet. So I'm just speculating and talking about based on my own experience.
So, so based on the, the, you know, monitoring, monitoring, monitoring plans, who typically pays for those?
Well, I can't speak to exactly how that's going to be set up here in terms of who pays for them, but it's, it's typically the responsible parties that are funding that now. How that will play out with this development, I can't say.
Yeah, because I mean, you know, the developer, I mean, you know, of course, UPC on the hook for remediating the site, cleaning it up. But then, you know, they could sell the property and I guess that responsibility goes to, you know, potential new property owner.
Yeah, so under-
My concern is though, I just don't want the city to be in a position where, you know, you have a development agreement with, with one entity and then, you know, yeah, it's supposed to, you know, the responsibility is supposed to move on to, I guess, the next property owner. But, you know, as you've seen in many situations where, you know, it seems like someone should be responsible for cleaning up a site and then, and they're not responsible anymore, right?
Yeah, so ultimately, in the eyes of the state and under the order, so, you know, UPC is the named entity that is responsible for the cleanup under the order. So they will, they will never, and I'm not the lawyer here, and so maybe the lawyer should weigh in, but, but they will, they will always be a responsible party by being in the chain of title for these properties. But there will be, you know, mechanisms put in place. So if they, let's say, and again, I guess I'm not the right person to speak to this, but there could be mechanisms, like I said, there's going to be a financial assurance mechanism. And that is something that is standard with a remedial action where there are long-term O and N obligations that, like the DTSC says, okay, give us a cost estimate for the ongoing O and M for the next 30 years. And you put up a bond, you could get insurance. There's a range of ways that you do that to make sure that the money is there to fund it for that period of time. So I think Kiana may want to raise her hand or try to speak, so, just so she can speak to it.
Before Kiana, before Kiana speaks to that, just real quickly, just to remind the council that we actually have an agency like this set up in Brisbane out at Sierra Point and it runs with the property. It holds insurance and it's operated for now, I think about 30 years. So an oversight of that nature is what we would anticipate with this particular project so that we don't ever run into the situation that you outlined, Cliff, where you would have a property owner that would walk away from their, their responsibility.
Thank you.
Thank you, Clay.
But it is, but it is true that a future property owner would be responsible for the cost and the O and M of that, and that could be an individual homeowner.
That would depend on how, you know, the, the- That would depend on how, you know, the the transactions are set up and how, you know, that I, you know, it's, that's not a de facto way that that necessarily happens.
I would be, we'll have to see how it is done, Madam Mayor, but with the attention given to this property, I'd almost think it would be a fraud if the issue was not addressed in the purchase and sale agreements for homes. So I I think it'll be not only protected, as Clay said, but I I suspect there'll also be additional provisions with attachments of all sorts of disclosures to make people fully aware as to who's responsible and and but I doubt very much it's going to fall to a homeowner.
Tom, I also have a question for you, you know, in regards to that. You know, I'm just kind of just throwing it out there. I mean, could there be some kind of assessment on someone's property taxes that a certain amount goes to monitoring and any, you know, potential work to to mitigate any problems in regards to the remediation action plan?
Meaning an individual homeowner's property?
So, yeah, I mean, so, you know, if there was some kind of assessment on, you know, like, like you have a you know, like all property owners are shipping in to a fund that, you know, yeah, so that if there is, you know, an issue that needs to be addressed, there is this money plus whatever, you know, some kind of insurance that that could cover those costs if if, you know, if 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 the cap or whatever is compromised.
I mean, the purchase and sale of a house is is contract law. So, yeah, you can build in all sorts of provisions. I would suspect that nobody purchasing a home would want that provision. As Clay said, you you sort of build these in so that they're overseen by the by the, it doesn't have to be the city, it can be a special district, et cetera, but you do it that way. But could conceivably, could it be done? Yes. And historically, what got us in trouble, lots of things got us in trouble is the country and superfund sites, but one of the pieces was this notion that whoever held title at the moment owed for and had to remediate the sins of 100 years before or 40 years before. That's why I made the point I made earlier. I don't, I can't conceive of a way that that could come to pass. I give me attention on this issue here. But could some creative financing come into play as a backstop insurance? That's that's all about negotiation.
Hey, any more questions before I move on? I think we're at actually at a good place with the discussion that we've had because, you know, this next step, once the FS wrap is approved and assuming the agencies approve of the remedy, the agencies have been supportive of proposed remedies at this point. There are, as I mentioned, the the forthcoming design documents that are really a critical step because these design documents are really the meat on the bones that define how the remedy is going to be put in place and what are ultimately going to be the long term obligations to have human health protectiveness during construction and after construction. So, you know, with that, we, you know, we recommend and have recommended to to city staff that the city issue formal comments that basically provide the stance that we want to make sure that the preferred alternatives are ultimately implemented to be protective and to be compliant with Measure JJ and that we want to stay involved and engaged in the process with the developers and with the agencies so that we we can have that input on those critical design documents as they go forward. So with that, I think, John, you were going to just say a few final words?
Again, thank you. Again, just a reminder that this was an informational presentation from the city staffs in our consultant team perspective. Again, we didn't prepare the the rap, and we're not ultimately in a position to approve the rap. So again, I want to put this slide up in case anybody's watching is interested in actually reviewing the materials and making formal comments. These are the actual comment deadlines and where comments on the rap should be. And again, just getting back to, you know, what we talked about and Michelle alluded to and was alluded to before, O and M kind of arrangements, operations and maintenance, the idea of who would be responsible for what is is the city attorney was talking about. Those are all again, subsequent reviews that the city would expect to to be engaged in with the various regulators before DTSC or the regional board approves an O and M sort of plan to understand what those financial arrangements are and if they're sufficient to the city, if they're not sufficient to the city, we have our own tools through development agreement and other entitlement to make sure they suit our needs.
Madam Mayor, I, one of our attorneys, Kiana, would like to to speak. Ingrid, I think she needs to be let in.
Sure, that would be wonderful. Thank you.
Mr. Vani, go ahead and unmute yourself.
Great, thank you. Can you all hear me?
Yeah.
Yes.
Wonderful. I just wanted to speak to the financial assurances portion. In addition to some of the items that the the city can implement as part of the order, as well as what is in the Health and Safety Code and the California Code of Regulations, there are certain requirements that are tied to the operations and and maintenance plan that provides the lead agencies, the ability to enforce oversight to make sure that the owners, as well as future owners, are required to pay for O and M on the cap. So since and since these land use restrictions are usually in the form of covenants, they will be tied to the property and in perpetuity. And they should not go, they should not pass to any future homeowner without their knowledge at the very least, but since these are items that have not been drafted and we, you know, UPC has indicated that land use restrictions are part of the preferred remedial alternative number three. We would like to see the language that is going to be forthcoming in these land use restrictions to ensure that it does meet the requirements under the Health and Safety Code as well as keeping the responsibility on UPC, the developer, as well as any future developer, so that it doesn't pass to the city.
Thank you for that. I I do believe that while all of us on the council are trying to protect the city from any liabilities, we also want to protect any future residents or workers in that same instance. So I know that, at least I am very particularly aware of this, and the thought that cost is going to be the driving decision on what is the proposed approved remedial action plan is very worrisome to me. So I hope that the city will put a lot of thought into their comments and to their swaying of whatever powers that be to make sure that whatever is built out there remains safe. And whether it's an economic issue for the city is of secondary importance to the safety of the site.
Madam Mayor, if I may, I I want to stress and and Kiana, Kiana addressed it very directly. I did not know whether it was a regulation or if it was case law, but it sounds like it's regulation. I just literally cannot conceive of a way where this will, the liability would transfer to the new homeowner. I guess it's possible, I just can't conceive of that under California law. That issue we'll all stay on it. We know how important it is, but I do want to give you an assurance on that. And Kiana, if you disagree, please, please let me know, but you you know this area of the law better than I do. And then two is, of course, the the longer term question of financing the property is that's part of that, I'm sorry, financing the the O and M over the long term, retaining the liability where it belongs, et cetera, is all part of the negotiation that that is to come, Madam Mayor, just as you intimated.
Thank you so so much for that clarification. Are there any other comments? I'm only seeing the EKA stream, EKI stream. So I cannot see if there's any other comments from the council. Oh, there we go. If there's anyone else on the council that would like to make any comments on this, I see a no from Karen. Cliff would like to make a comment, and why don't we invite him to do so now?
All right, thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, so I have a few questions. So so, Michelle, with the the site evaluation, so so that that particular phase is has been completed, it it sounds like. Is that correct?
Yeah, so the site evaluation phase is complete, but that doesn't mean there's going to be no more sampling.
So yeah, so that, yes, that's what I wanted to get to was like the, you know, the data gaps. You know, that is something that was brought up, you know, many times, you know, in the past, you know, how how good was the the sampling, right? I mean, you know, if you if you're you have too wide an area, you know, you could miss various contaminants. So, yeah, if you could speak to that, please.
Yeah, so so the amount of sampling that's needed is some sometime, it's related to the the remedy that you're going to put into place to some degree. So where they're going to do the hotspot excavation and the injection work, there will likely be, and I think it is included in the remedy, to do some additional investigations in that area because they need to know the extent of where they're going to inject to do the in situ treatment of the groundwater. Because they're going to want to focus it in the areas where it matters. Same thing if they're going to excavate the source soil, they need to do further characterization. There's going to be some type of additional assessment done in the industrial way area because that's an area where I think there's an opinion that perhaps they haven't adequately characterized the industrial area, the extent of what that's going to be, we don't really know. And in terms of, you know, missing, as as I said, that, you know, like if you have a capping alternative and metals are out there, if there's an area where you have a metal at 50 and you have a metal at 2,000, if it's capped, there's no exposure to the metal. So you don't necessarily have to find every spot and look at every area if the remedy is going to be effective. And for the volatile compounds, that's where they're going to do, you know, a soil vapor assessment, and that'll be focused where the buildings are going to be, I presume, that there, once they have a development plan in place and they import the soil, then they will focus the soil vapor assessments in the areas where there's going to be occupied space. If it's a, you know, five acre park where there really isn't that type of exposure, they don't necessarily need to do that soil vapor assessment. Does that make sense, Cliff?
Yeah, no, no, it does. So I I'm I'm curious to know, like, you know, you're our consultant, you know, what what's your role in overseeing to make sure that that they are doing their job properly?
So, you know, really what we've been tasked with is to evaluate the the remedial action plan. We evaluated the data that they put forth and provided our own opinion of, you know, is the site adequately characterized? Where are the data gaps? And so we've poked and prodded and asked questions. So industrial way was one of the areas that we poked and prodded about. And there were things like the the VOC hotspot area, you know, what are you going to do about that? And so we've along the way have pushed UPC to do certainly provide more detail than they had originally in this document. Originally, the document was so, it was very vague and broad brush, and we said, no, you need to explain things more, you need to put in more information on the vapor intrusion and on these various things so that there is a little bit more clarity going forward, but still recognizing that the ultimate details will be in the design documents.
Yeah, you know, it is interesting that you mentioned that Councilwoman Cunningham and myself had a meeting with UPC today. And it was an update on, you know, just like where they are. We haven't seen a new specific plan from them that we thought we're going to get one in the summer. Granted, you know, COVID came along and, okay, cut them some slack there, but they they showed us a doc, you know, a slide of this area plus the, you know, the area north of Main Street, and it was very vague. It was, it was like hardly any details. And it's like, wait a minute. That you guys were kind of close to being done. And so you know, not having that type of detail is very concerning. And so, I mean, you know, we're supposed to trust the system. And, you know, but without having those details, it makes it really difficult for us to then go to our constituents who we, you know, who went out there you know, a couple of years ago and said, hey, you need to pass Measure JJ because, you know, if we do this, we'll have the oversight. And 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 not having those details, it you know, I I don't want, we don't want to let down our constituents. And and so, you know, that's why we're relying on you to to really dig out those details and make sure that when it goes to the next level, you you know, you you've done the best job you possibly can.
Yeah, and that's, I mean, that is the perspective we've been taking is really to to push, and it is, it it really does point to the ongoing involvement that's going to be needed as they move into the phase where they are going to be providing more detail. And when they do know that it's going to be at grade residential here or office over there or a park or, you know, in this other spot and really understanding how and what they're going to be doing and to make sure there is that adequate, you know, adequate monitoring program as they go forward and the remedy is implemented.
So I know Karen has a comment here, and I think she'd like to, I know we need to sort of speed this up because we're not going to get all the answers we need tonight. Would you like to go ahead, Karen?
Yeah, sure. So relative to the meeting that that we had with UPC earlier, Baylands Development, Inc., earlier today, Cliff, I I think I I think what was brought to us this this morning was kind of a and just an overview of, you know, here's where things have gone, not not a detailed drill down into what's in the soil. From from our perspective this evening, Michelle, I've been asking a question before I was on the planning commission, before I was on anything, when we were talking about the Baylands going back 20 years, you know, as somebody who did go to school for science, I've been asking for many, many years the question of, you know, what happens underground when two or three or four more chemicals collide? I mean, what's the anaerobic, what's the aerobic consequences of that? And it might be a really naive question relative to what's going on out there. But if I'm asking that question as somebody who studied this kind of stuff in science many years ago, we're going to have to provide those answers to other people in our community who may have more experience than me or less experience than me, but those questions are going to be there. For example, I'm just going to give you a really, you know, basic example here. So what we know about the entire Baylands is it was an unregulated dump. It was unregulated medical, military waste for 100 years. It was everything that came from the 1906 earthquake out of San Francisco, which, of course, we know is lead and asbestos from those buildings. But what were the thermometers that we used prior to the 1970s? They were all mercury. And I have never once seen a mention They were all mercury. And I have never once seen a mention of mercury in any report or any discussion relative to what's in that soil. I, I, I was just a resident. I'm still just a resident. I'm a civil servant. I'm here trying to find answers to make sure that whatever we do moving forward is going to be safe for our community. So even though, you know, you're an expert in, in this particular area, I think we need to, to make some of this information a little more basic and simple to answer those questions for other people like me who want to know, okay, we know all the thermometers from all the, the medical and military installations for a hundred years went out there. But we've never had a mention of the word mercury in any of these reports. Does that make sense to you?
Yeah, no, I understand what you're saying. So they did look for mercury, just so you know. They did, um, roughly a hundred foot grid across the two O U's for soil sampling, and they sampled soil at different depths, and mercury was included in those analyses. So they did look for it.
Okay.
Okay, so I can answer that question. And, and so those data are included in the appendices of the F S Raps from those investigations. And so sometimes, and I don't recall the specifics of these tables, that, um, sometimes they might only show the detected metals. So it's possible that mercury, and I have no idea off the top of my head, it's possible mercury wasn't even detected in any of the samples. But you often find mercury, but they did look for it and they did that extensive grid. So you can understand that. In terms of, you know, the mixture of chemicals that are out there. So part of the risk assessment is to look at what we call the cumulative risks. And so they look across all the different chemicals and they look at, you know, which are the potential carcinogens, which are the potential non carcinogens. And they use what I would say are very conservative toxicity parameters that come from the US EPA and from CAL EPA, and they evaluate those risks. And they add up all the risks for all the different compounds. And so they do look at sort of that overall effect when they're looking at the human health risks. And they did find that the risk driver is primarily arsenic for the metals in soil. And, um, I don't remember exactly which chlorinated VOC was, was a risk driver. Actually, the VOCs, they just said, we need to evaluate once Phil's brought in, um, now that I'm thinking about that one. But, um, so, so that's the way they look at it from a risk assessment perspective. So they do look at not just the chemicals as individuals, but they do add up the cumulative effects. And then Karen, you brought up another point of anaerobic, aerobic, and what does that mean and how does that impact things? So the condition that's been out there has been pretty stable over the decades, basically. Uh, we know that the site's been closed and nothing has happened out there for decades. And so when they look at the groundwater quality, the groundwater there was pretty stagnant and it really doesn't migrate. And so, but what could change the migration? So when they do the injection in that VOC hotspot area, um, they don't know, they haven't decided what they're going to inject. So they could inject something that would be aerobic, that it could oxidize for the scientists that's here, that could oxidize the VOCs in the subsurface, and that could change the chemistry that's there. Um, but they will monitor for, so if you do an oxidizing remedy, typically you're required to monitor and make sure that you don't cause any long-term adverse effects or changes. Another option is that they could inject, I think as Clark, Cliff mentioned, microorganisms and, uh, other food sources, electron donors, basically edible oils and things like that to anaerobically degrade the chemicals that are out there. And those can have another set of byproducts and change the chemistry. But again, those things are monitored for, and that's a critical part of the agency oversight to make sure there's an adequate monitoring plan that it doesn't, um, change things too radically. So sorry to go into the technical weeds on you, but.
No, 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 that's, that's actually, uh, really important to me. And it's important to me to be able to explain that to other people when we, we talk about that. Is there any way to write something up that explains that in layman, very simple layman terms? That, you know, we, we know there's, you know, this is here right now, and this is here, and if these things mix, blah, blah, blah. Not in scientific terms, but, you know, if I'm asking those questions with a scientific background and people get a little bit of knowledge and they're going to start asking those questions, I think we need to have preemptive answers or already in place. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I mean, in some ways, what, you know, yeah, well, because, yeah, I mean, it's probably written a little bit too much in, um, technical mumbo jumbo in the FS rap, uh, where it would talk about cumulative risks. I mean, it would say that we looked at the different pathways and the different chemicals and we added it up and did cumulative risks. Um, and sometimes it's easier to hear a person say it than to read it, to be honest with you.
Yeah.
Um, but I, you know, if that's a desire from the city council or members of staff to prepare something, I, I'm looking at John.
John?
I think the discussion.
But if you'd like to go ahead.
Um, you know, the council should have the discussion and again, whatever recommendations you want to make above and beyond sort of our formal comments on the, on the wraps are fair game tonight for the council to make in terms of information or dissemination of information. So we would defer.
Yeah, if, if I may, in response to that, um, Karen, I think, I think we need it both ways. I think, uh, I think it's important to have the technical end of it, you know, to have it understood thoroughly from, you know, the scientific community, right? And then also, as you said, the layman terms. So, you know, uh, should be two stories that are the same, but told different ways.
Yeah.
One is technical and one is, you know, layman's terms. So I think they're both important. Otherwise, the wider swath of communication you can get out there, the better.
Well, we, we talk all the time about, you know, how do we get messaging through about a, almost anything? And from a messaging perspective, anybody who asks me, I say, we message often. We message in as many different ways as we can. And we do it, you know, o- over, you know, multiple platforms and as, and as often as we can. Because nobody is paying attention all the time, you know, even, even us, we're not paying attention all the time, and I miss things. I know I miss things. So, you know, the more information we can get out there, the clearer information we can get out there. Um, you know, the, 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 the better everything's going to be in the long run. If, if we can make this package, you know, a- absorbable and available at all times. It is kind of my perspective on this.
Great, thank you. Um, so I'm assuming that concludes staff's report. And we can move on and, and deal with this in subcommittee and at a personal level and through outreach.
You know, Madam Mayor, if I, if I just can ask one, one question, um, to, I guess, yeah, I guess to Clay or, or John. So, uh, when, when, when do you anticipate to, uh, compile your comments and then submit them? And, and the reason I ask that is, you know, I thought we did a very thorough job with our comments to the high speed rail, uh, draft the IR. I mean, I, I, I don't anticipate you're putting in that, that monumental ever like we did, you know, for that, but um, it, the way that you interacted with the council and kept the council informed, um, I thought was, was really, really helpful for us.
Well, the deadline is the end of January, I believe. So, you know, we have sixty days, more or less, to, uh, put the comments together. Um, you know, I think we need to talk to the, defer to the city manager in terms of, you know, whether we have a draft letter, and then that's reviewed by subcommittee or whatever the mechanism is. You know, the council has the opportunity to review a draft. I would think that would be what you'd be interested in, not having to draft the letter, but review a draft prepared, you know, from our consultant team as the starting point for whatever discussions you might have. That would be my suggestion, and whether it's by subcommittee or full council, I would defer.
So is this something that we've had Dr. Lee if I, um, look into?
So maybe I can field that one. So, um, Dr. Lee, um, has been working with us. Um, his expertise, um, really, I think it's going to be most helpful, um, as we get to the point where we're putting together the, um, long-term management plan, uh, for these, um, the two different O U's and the, uh, the landfill. Um, he didn't have the capacity to be able to do the data gap analysis that we had E K I come in and, uh, and do, which was very kind of finite, um, sort of, um, uh, technical engineering work. Um, but he will be helpful to us. And what I've had the conversation with him is in terms of kind of providing some guidance for us. And not only how the, the oversight, um, organization gets set up, but with the long-term um, testing and protocols of, of that, uh, um, agency or, or what actually could end up being three different, um, groups because there's three different areas. Uh, so that will be kind of his, um, his role in, in this.
Okay, because in the, in the past, I know the community has put a lot of value on his, uh, input. And, you know, to me, getting a good remedial action plan is going to be more effective than having good aftercare. I mean, you always want the best surgeon, aftercare and physical therapy comes next. But, you know, you want the best starting out. And, you know, I think having the best comments and the best uh, remedial action plan that we can get. Um, and I understand finances for the developer and to the state are important. But I think the more we can get in actual cleanup, the more palatable all of this will be and more effective measures taken, you know, however we deal with this. But that would be my, my comment, that the better the cleanup, the better the whole outcome will be. So I would want to push for as much cleanup as we can. And frankly, costs be damned, my opinion. So, uh, you know, that's, that's just how I feel about it. Um, but thank you very much for all the reports and the hard work that the staff has put into this. And I think we should, um, try to go on to the next agenda because we're getting late here.
I think everybody shares your sentiment on what you just said, you know, it's just that, uh, we're subject to the state regulators.
Of course, of course. Um, so that's going to bring us to item K, short-term rental ordinance implementation and enforcement. Oh, do we have any comments from the public on this item before we move on?
No members of the, no members of the public, um, wish to speak at this time.
Okay, great. Thank you. So that'll move us on to item K, short-term rental ordinance implementation and enforcement. Staff.
Through the mayor, if you don't mind, we could combine the two items, the short-term rental and then the following item, the ordinance, which is, uh, related, if that's okay. You're doing one.
If, if that's okay with legal, I'm sure, certainly happy to do that.
The presentation, that's perfectly fine. Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. Um, well, thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. This is, uh, twofold. One is just provide a sort of a brief update of where we are with the current short-term rental ordinance, uh, both implementation and enforcement efforts. Uh, next slide, please, Ingrid. Again, by reminder, there are two things, two ordinances in play. We adopted an urgency ordinance, um, which was adopted in June of this year, um, to allow for immediate, um, enforcement and, um, implementation of a short-term rental permit requirements. Uh, that was adopted in, in June, effective immediately. And we're looking at, um, basically, um, rescinding that ordinance this evening, um, because of the fact that, uh, subsequent to the urgency ordinance, we also adopted a regular ordinance, which had the same effect. Uh, and it took effect in October of this year. So the urgency ordinance is essentially redundant. So we'll be recommending that it be, uh, rescinded this evening, which is the other item on your agenda tonight. Um, anyway, getting back to the original ordinance, this reminder of what the short-term permitting requirements were. Uh, we're allowing only homeowners to host, um, if their home is a permanent residence, you know, avoiding the idea of someone buying uh, properties, using them primarily for short-term rentals. Uh, so that was a key provision, that short-term rentals must be hosted, which means that the, the occupant, the owner must be present uh, at the time that the, any, uh, short-term renters are present. It only occur in single-family homes. Uh, not, uh, ADUs or accessory dwelling units can't be used for short-term rental. And that only up to two, uh, rooms may be used for, uh, short-term rentals. On the flip side, it pro- prohibits, uh, short-term rentals being hosted by renters. It prohibits unhosted rentals. It, uh, prohibits short-term rentals in apartments or multiple-room rentals. And lastly, it established a permit procedure that's in place now. Uh, next slide. Please. So again, uh, the city made an extensive out, outreach effort to make sure that the community was aware of, you know, the ordinance and its passage and its effective date. Uh, again, this just sort of outlines, it was also in your staff report, the number of measures we took to make sure it was well-publicized and the information made, made available to all parties. Uh, next slide, please. So despite our, uh, best efforts to date, uh, no permits have been submitted at this point or or no eligible permits. We did receive one application that we had to reject because it was an ineligible unit. It was an, an ADU, which are not permitted. So, I mean, it does raise some questions about why the city's provisions, um, are not being, um, moved forward with in terms of people applying for permits. Again, we haven't had any direct feedback from current operators as to, um, what exactly is the issue or are the issues, you know? Lack of awareness could be a potential issue. I think as we demonstrated, we've made an extensive outreach program. We don't believe that's an issue. Um, you know, there could be some issues with eligibility. The fact that, uh, hosted versus non-hosted, um, that could be a, a factor. Use of ADUs could be a factor, or limitation on ADUs could be a factor that, that keep people from being eligible. Um, you know, the question of the standards and requirements too stringent. Um, you know, limitations on rooms or parking or whatever, those constraints from people obtaining permits. Or is it sort of partially a market issue in the travel market with the pandemic, uh, you know, the, the demand for, for these kind of uses isn't very high right now. So, um, you know, those are all unknown factors at this point. You know, we keep monitoring and tracking. Um, you know, we'll report back to the council, any direction or comments you, you want to, you know, have this evening about that particular issue, we're glad to take, or if you want to table that for another um, meeting, see how things progress, you know, over the winter, we can certainly do that. Uh, the other issue we want to talk about site, uh, briefly is code enforcement. Um, again, as you're aware, the city's code enforcement procedures are primarily enforcement-based. Where, uh, when complaints are made, or complaint-based rather, or complaints are made, we investigate them and, and resolve them. Uh, with the idea primarily of getting to, uh, compliance with whatever code requirements are in place. The other approach would be a more proactive, um, approach in nature where, especially with short-term rentals, there is kind of a, um, time component. You know, you could have, um, properties coming on, on or off-site listings being listed. So, you know, something could be filed, a complaint could be filed. The, it could show up on a site, a hosting site, and then be pulled, but it could reappear later. So, so again, a complaint basis is going to be somewhat spotty in terms of it's not going to be uniform and it's, you know, not going to be regular necessarily. Um, if the city wanted to move forward with a more proactive approach, that would involve sort of actively monitoring hosting sites and take enforcement action. Uh, that would be a much greater investment of, of staff time and effort. Or, you know, there are consultant services that, um, consultant firms that provide those kind of services for multiple jurisdictions. We had reached out to one such firm. I looked at the estimates of the cost, you know, approximately ten thousand dollars annually to provide that kind of service. to provide that kind of service. And again, those are all factors. Certainly if the, we had an active STR permitting process and you had a lot of permits, some of the enforcement or monitoring costs could be recouped by, you know, fees and TOT that such uses might bring in. But if, if sort of an outside firm is essentially having an enforcement role, only resulting in the removal of, of STRs that aren't legal, then we're really not going to generate a lot of revenue or fees to offset the enforcement. So again, those are issues for, just wanted to kind of put them forward for the council, for your consideration and discussion as you see fit. So in regard to the update, you know, glad to take any questions, comments you have. And then in regard to the other item, we are recommending the, the rescission or the elimination of the previous urgency ordinance through adoption of ordinance. I believe it's 658 on your agenda this evening. That concludes staff's comments.
I have a question.
Thank you so much. Go ahead, Madison.
So let's, let's say that, you know, ultimately we have, I think the staff report said between like 10 and 20 or so listings at any given time. And we bring this code enforcement person on to get that settled. To me, that doesn't sound like it's like a really overwhelming amount of properties to make contact with and to come, get them into compliance one way or another. So how does the contract for working with a service provider like that work? Do you pay, is it an annual contract? Is it month-to-month? You know, once we, once we have felt satisfied that we, you know, have everyone into compliance, everyone's playing by the rules that we could eliminate that cost?
Well, certainly, you know, whatever contract would be negotiated, I think the practical difficulty comes in that again, what is enforcement of, what does that mean? So you enforce, somebody identifies a listing maybe for an illegal STR. It's removed. The question is, will it stay removed? So it's a little different than other kind of more static kind of zoning and, you know, enforcement items we often have where it's a static activity. So having someone come in and kind of do, or staff doing a clean sweep at any given time doesn't guarantee that in three months, four months, five months, you're not going to have it either a recurrence or even different properties pop up. So I think that's the, you know, the challenge of this particular land use enforcement compared to more static items.
I guess it just depends on how many bad actors you get. But I would, I was just thinking like after a year of enforcing and ticketing, you know, the same bad actors over and over and over again theoretically. I only can go through so many fines before behavior changes, I assume. So I was thinking like, you know, a year down the road, is it something that we, like there's flexibility in how walked in we are to a service provider like that?
So, so I'd like to say that the city put and the, the commissions and the council put so much work into these regulations. And for whether it's 10, 20, or 50 people to disregard them, I think is a pretty blatant disregard of the laws. And I think that we should commit to getting compliance. And if that's a $10,000 commitment to get compliance and to weed out the bad actors, I think that's something we should do. I, I truly believe that we had a majority of the council, if not unanimous on the council to enact these rules. And I think that we need to apply them. And the only way we're going to get the transit-oriented tax from these units is to have enforcement. And so I would be in favor of allowing us to enter into a contract to get code enforcement to alleviate the problems that the police are having and our citizens are having with the noise and the bad actors. So I think that's how I would look at moving forward. And I'd love to hear Karen's raising her Boy Scout raise. So we'll go with her.
Okay, I'm probably not going to be as kind as you are, Terry, regarding this. So I, I did attend some program probably a couple of years ago now and sent my recommendations to Clay about the, the company that does the the work for what's the town up in Tahoe?
They was Truckee?
Thank you. I was having a mind blank there, a little tired today. So the, the company that went into Truckee, because Truckee had this horrible problem with the abuses of the short-term rental market. This, this was a, a small company that went in, used Truckee as their model, got everything sorted out in Truckee. I don't know if that's who we're dealing with. I really have no idea. But I did bring this to Clay's attention and, and they, they did a, a major cleanup of the whole place. But relative to what our mayor just said, you know, staff, planning commission, city council, community outreach, we all did a lot of work. And from my perspective, the disrespect that has been given back to city council and staff and our entire community is disgraceful, in my opinion. And I'm ready to scrap the entire program right now because the people that we set out to help in the first place and some of the actors who, you know, we knew personally, you know, want to pay off student loans, want to be the elder person who wants to make some additional income to stay in their homes. This is everything that we worked on collectively to put together, to put a really great program together. And then of course, we've got the bad actors who were buying homes just to use as short-term rentals. And they don't care about our community. But to think that the people that we really had in our hearts to help have not even come forward and put in one application for a business license. When I've had a business license in this town for over 20 years, I don't have anybody comes to my home. I work out of my home and I do my own business. I pay my business license. To think that every other person doing short-term rental in our town has not even had the courtesy to put in one application is offensive at such a high level to me. I'm ready to scrap the entire program and say, we should make it illegal in Brisbane. So people either step up and do the right thing, or in my opinion, let's scrap it all. Thank you.
Well, unfortunately, if we scrapped it all and had no, we would still need someone to do enforcement to say, there's something here. So we need to do enforcement before we can understand what kind of offenses are happening and what kind of monetary transitory tax we are missing out on. Because I know I have looked at units available in Airbnb here and they are charging a 14% tax to their customers built into their fee on top of their daily fee. And when you think that, let's say, a week's rental is $1,000 and they're adding on that 14%, how long does it take to make our $10,000 back? So I think it's cost-effective. I think it'll weed out some of the bad actors and it may get some of the good actors to buy into the program so that they're paying their fair share on what's going on. And it's a pass-through tax. It doesn't affect the owners, the, the TOT doesn't affect the people who have those units. They're collecting it. It's part of their standard fee. It's like when you look at a hotel room and it's $150 a night, that's what you see. You know, you're going to be paying the state and the transit tax on top of it. You don't look at that 150 rate and think that's, you're out the door at 150. So you know, I, I think we need to pay to have it enforced because if it's an outside party that is doing the enforcing and scanning the listings, it's not reflective and it's not on our staff to be the people who are the bad guys or the good guys. When they know these people, they're friends with these people. We're all friends with these people. Other than the homes that are the really bad actors. You know, so it wouldn't put the, the, the process on our staff where, you know, there's name-calling, so to speak. It would be a third party who runs it, deals with it, and enforces it. So I would hope that I would get a motion and a second to go ahead and, and get a third-party administrator to help us work through these issues.
Make that motion.
Do we have a second? We do, we do. With that, can we get a roll call vote? Oh, wait, should I open up any public comments on this item?
And Madam Mayor, can Councilwoman Davis specify what her motion is?
Okay, my motion is to to hire an enforcement agency as suggested by staff and rescind ordinance number 656, the urgency ordinance to regulate short-term rentals.
You're moving approval of items K and L jointly?
Correct. Approval of items K and L jointly.
Okay. And just, just to be aware that the staff report was printed incorrectly and it's considered introduction of ordinance 658 and rescinding order 656. Go ahead, Clark.
Just one thing on the ordinance where it says at the bottom, the above ordinance was regularly introduced and the waiting time required by law thereafter passed and adopted a regular meeting was held on December 10th, 2020. We're doing that tonight. Tonight's not December 10th, right? Am I reading something wrong here?
Clark, could you repeat what you're?
What page, Clark?
Oh.
There's a typo on the ordinance itself.
Oh, the date, yeah, I'm sorry. Yes. Correct the date.
Yeah, we need to correct the date before we pass the ordinance.
Thank you. Thank you, Clark. We were all wondering if there was a third report out there that we were missing.
No.
Good catch, Clark. That was a good catch.
He's always a stickler. But I will go back to the city clerk. Do we have any public comments on this?
No members of the public have submitted any texts or emails at this time.
And there's no members of the public in our meeting at this time that would like to speak?
We have one member of the public that's in the meeting but has not expressed wanting to speak at this time.
Great. Well, we have a motion by Madison Davis and a second by Clark Conway. Can we get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Conway?
Aye.
Councilmember Cunningham?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lance?
Aye.
And Mayor O'Connell.
I thank you very much. And I'm trying to push things along. It's getting late for us tonight.
Terry, can I just say one thing real quick?
Of course, please.
So I, I'm on a two-day headache right now. I've taken medicine. Nothing is working. That's why I've been really quiet this whole time. I'm like, been really trying to muscle through it, but I've really reached my limit. So I was trying to hang on so we could get through that. So I'm, I'm just going to bow out gracefully right now because that's all I have left in me. And I don't know if the council would entertain entertain discussing item M at a later date. I know that Clay said he sent out an updated staff report and it came in a little bit late. So that might be, that's might help, be how we could justify that. So is anyone?
Yes.
Thank you so much, Madison. I appreciate you powering through to get to this point. So thank you. Thank you so much. Have a good evening.
Thanks. Bye.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Bye, guys.
Bye-bye. So on the matter of item M, do we have any pressing need to push through with this tonight? Or can we push it off to the next meeting? Okay, so with that, I'd like to continue item M, use of housing authority funds to assist low, moderate renters, homeowners payments due to COVID-19 related issues to the next scheduled meeting, which would be on?
December 10th.
December 10th. Thank you so much. All those in favor, roll call, please.
Councilmember Conway?
Did we do a motion?
I did a motion to continue.
I'll second your motion, Madam Mayor.
Okay, we had a second. Okay, now we have a motion. Okay.
Okay.
Councilmember Conway?
Aye.
Councilmember Cunningham?
Aye.
Councilmember Lance?
Aye.
And Mayor O'Connell.
Aye. Thank you very much. So that brings us to staff reports, city managers' report on upcoming activities.
Go ahead and share the screen here.
We go to the, there we go. So I will, I know that hour is late, so we'll power through these fairly quickly. We've already spoke about both of these, the first two items earlier tonight. But just a reminder to the public that the public comment period on OU one or OU San Mateo is from November 16th through February 15th of 2020. And the next one, next item, Ingrid, there we go, before the water board is Baylands OU two. The comment period is been extended now to January 31st of next year. Both of the remedial action plan documents are located in Brisbane City Hall in our conference room. We're open on Mondays and Thursdays from nine to one. And we can make special occasion appointments if people need other time to come in and take a look at that. It is fairly voluminous, the, the amount of documents that are involved, but they are available if somebody wants to look at those. Reminder that the Festival of Lights will be going off on December 6th, between 6:00 and 7:00 p.m. We planned a COVID-friendly Festival of Lights event this year. There will be a light parade with cars driven by volunteers, virtual tree lighting, North Pole parcels, which are to-go bags for purchase and pickup Thursday before the event. Reminder to everyone to turn on your lights, the stars, I should say, before the Festival of Lights at 6:00 p.m. on the, the 6th. If you would like a star for your home or business, you can contact the Parks and Recreation Department at 415-508-2140. Brisbane resident and star maker Bob Wilson provides the wood frame stars at no cost. The winter hours for the farmer's market have been increased from one to, one to 6:00 p.m. Next week, it will be on Wednesday before Thanksgiving. So that will be an opportunity for people to get tidy pies and other Thanksgiving sorts of foods. Reminder to the public that we are doing an outreach for, and recruitment for various seats on boards and commissions of the city of Brisbane. and recruitment for various seats on boards and commissions of the city of Brisbane. Um, you can contact the city clerk uh, to get, uh, information about, uh, the applications. Um, and we will continue to advertise that in our various forums, uh, so that we get the word out there as best as possible. And, um, we do have a, um, a blood drive that is, um, going on, um, on November 28th and November 30th. Um, and that's at Vital Blood Drive here in, uh, Brisbane. And you can sign for, up for it on the website. Um, and again, we will be advertising this in the, at the blast, uh, tomorrow. And then finally, uh, San Mateo County Community Forums, um, you come share your experiences with racially inequity. Uh, the first meeting, um, was actually, uh, earlier this evening, but there will be subsequent uh, meetings on Saturday, December 12th at 10 to two, or 10 to 12. And Wednesday, January 27th from six to eight. Uh, you can get information on that on, uh, our website, also on the county of San Mateo website or Supervisor Canapas', uh, website. I think we'll also have information about that. Um, with that, I, that completes my report for tonight.
Thank you so much. Um, we appreciate that update and that brings us to mayor and council manner matters. And we'll start with county wide assignments and subcommittees. Anyone want to start us off?
Should we skip it?
Mine will be very short. Um, I believe I had one meeting and it was something that no decisions were made. I can't even remember what it was right at the moment.
It, it was with me. And it had to do with, uh, the presentation that happened tonight on the Baylands.
That's true. That's true. We already heard about.
Yeah.
Cliff?
Yeah, uh, this morning, um, there was a commute.org meeting, uh, just real brief, uh, the, the board, um, uh, discussed our current strategic plan, which, uh, is, um, gonna be, I think, a fantastic, uh, document that helps an organization, uh, not only, uh, build upon its successes, but, uh, uh, also, uh, provides potential opportunities, uh, in the post-COVID, uh, era. And, um, you know, Karen, we did talk about the, the subcommittee meeting that we had, uh, at Baylands with UPC and uh, yes, you know, I, I did complain about them not, uh, being very, uh, forthright with the details. Um, you know, one of the questions that was asked, uh, was, oh, hey, where, where are all the streets, uh, going to be for, you know, this particular area that they focus on? They go, oh, we don't have those details yet. So, uh, that's good. But there was one thing that they did propose, which I, um, you know, and I have to give them credit for listening. And that was a, um, a, a living bridge type, uh, situation over Geneva. So having this like green, uh, connective, uh, parkway that, uh, has this bridge over Geneva from, you know, uh, the roundhouse up to the northern part of, um, the Baylands, which I, I'm glad that they listened to us and, um, that's going to be part of the plan. But of course, no details, but just that will be.
The details. Story of our life, no details.
Anything else you want to add, Karen?
Just, just that, you know, I mean, you know, if we don't start with a vision, we, we never end up with a plan and just the fact that that was listened to and the, 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 the Skyway, um, park over Bay Shore is actually part of the plan, even though there's not a lot of details, was a big plus from my perspective. Also that, um, uh, there would be a one way street around it that would also have pedestrian, bicycle, scooter, whatever other means of, of passive transportation around a huge park. Is, is just, it was kind of an uplifting thing from my day. Um, did you have anything else to add to, uh, any other meetings, Cliff, before I go on?
No, no, I think that's it.
Okay, so, um, I, I have another two, the Bicycle Pedestrian Accessibility Committee, very disappointed in their, um, their identification of areas of importance in the county. Uh, Brisbane doesn't have any apparently, so I, I did complain to uh, Clay and we'll see where that goes. I cannot believe that with, you know, that the Bay Trail, that there is nothing identified for Brisbane as being of any importance at all. So super not happy with that particular, uh, outcome and I will be voicing my displeasure. I seem like a grouchy old bug tonight, don't I? Oh, well. Um, and then, uh, on November 12th, there was a C CAG meeting, equally unimpressed with the M T C A bag presentation that went on there. Um, but gee, I wasn't the only one. It was like all other 21 cities were equally PO'd. So you know, potentially the letter we received today might be the that the wedge that sort of drives some reality into M T C A bag. We'll just have to wait and see.
That's it. Great. Well, thank you all. Uh, Clark already gave his report for me and for us. So with that, we will go to the city council meeting schedule. I don't think we have a report on that, or do we?
There are no changes. Let me just go ahead and share my screen.
One meeting left, December 10th.
Tick, 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 tick.
But rubbing it in, Clark.
I'm not, I'm not rubbing it in. I'm just excited. That's all.
We don't blame you.
Our next scheduled city council meeting will be on December 10th. That will include the reorganization, the swearing in ceremonies for our three newly elected council members. As well as, um, the recognition services of outgoing mayor Terry O'Connell and outgoing council member Clark Conway.
There, there's one, um, item that if you, um, uh, we, we don't have to make a decision tonight, but the, uh, council, uh, assignments, um, we usually bring those to you, um, in January, which would be January 7th. Um, if you wanted us to bring that to you on December 10th, after you uh, do the swearing in of the new council person, we could do it that night. Um, but that's, um, kind of up to, up to the council what you want to do.
Personally, I think that that is something that we may need a little more time because I think there will be quite a bit of rotation. Um, but that won't be my decision to make. That will be the incoming mayor's decision to make. So we'll leave that up to her and she does not need to make that, or they do not need to make that decision tonight.
That was good.
Be in touch with you, Karen.
Okay, so, um, written correspondence. We had, um, you're going to need to make that a little bigger for me if you can. Okay. So Kevin Hayden on 11, 920 regarding a tow car, Kevin Fryer on 11, 1720. And doesn't say what it was about. Jessica Alof, 1117, please don't close the community park playground and skate park again. And Roseanne Faust, San Mateo County Economic Development Association, 11, 1820 regarding strategy E N seven, expand commute trip reduction programs at mayor employers. I assume that's major employers.
Yeah, Terry, Kevin Fryer was, uh, his was, uh, resigning from the Park and Rec Commission.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Resignation.
I did not see that, but that was just a day or two ago. Well, thank you very much. Um, and, uh, thank you, Kevin, for your hard work on Park and Rec. So with that, is there any oral communications, number two, members of the public who would like to speak on an item that was not on our agenda?
I have received, uh, no written correspondences, text messages and no members of the public wish to speak.
Thank you very much. And with that, I will call for an adjournment. Thank you all.
Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Thanksgiving, everybody.
Yes, thank you.